At this time, I'd like to call the right, the special meeting of the Wallingford Inland Wetlands Commission to order. The date is Wednesday, June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two, and we're at the Parisi Council Chambers of Town Hall, Wallingford, Connecticut. Please join me in a pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Eileen McKean.
Jim Vitale.
Jeffrey Nekio.
Jim Heilmann.
Erin O'Hare, environmental planner.
Okay, we'll go on to the minutes of the last special, last regular meeting we had, which is May fourth, two thousand twenty-two. Is there any comments regarding the minutes? Then I'll take, entertain a motion to approve or deny.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes from the regular meeting, May fourth, two thousand twenty-two.
Second?
A second.
Call for any, any discussion? Call for a vote. Jimmy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Ally?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, the regular meeting of June first was canceled. This is a replacement. Okay, we're gonna start off with a public hearing for application A twenty-two, five-point-one, five Research Parkway. This was brought on out of public interest, and this is their first pass at this commission.
Mr. Chairman, just a little housekeeping, can I do a little housekeeping?
Certainly.
On this, um, there was a public hearing notice posted here in the town hall on May thir- thirteenth for the first public hearing that was gonna be held June first, and it was also published twice in the Record Journal, as is required, and also in addition, the applicant also sent out notices to everybody within, all property owners within a hundred feet of the boundaries of this hundred acre, acre property. So they did that, but then we were rescheduled, because this room was not available, as you recall, so we had to reschedule and set a special meeting for June fifteenth, which is tonight, so at that time, then, because of that, another, a second notice was put out, cancellation notice, and a second notice that the hearing was rescheduled for tonight, and that was, that was dated May twenty-six, twenty-twenty-two, and publication dates of May thirty-first and June seventh in the Meriden Record Journal. Um, and I, and again, the, the applicant sent, re-noticed everybody, certified mail, and they gave me that proof of that certified mailing, and we have those certificates. Um, I did get, I don't know when you want, I only got one, uh, letter of commentary coming in from the public, I don't know if you want that, me to hand that later, after the presentation, or no?
Uh, yes, well, uh, let it come in now. Are you reading it into the record, or are you just submitting it for the record?
I wasn't.
Red microphone.
This is from Ed Bradley.
Microphone.
This is from Ed Bradley. It's on, there you go.
This is from Ed Bradley, Lizum Hantum Trail. Um, it's basically an outline, and he wants to testify later, this is an outline of what he's gonna present. Nothing came in from the public, or from anyone, except for a few of the departments, but we can get to that later.
What else?
That's it for the, for right now, thank you.
All right. So, yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, uh, thank you for allowing us to come to your special meeting. My name is Dennis, this is Jeff Dewey, both are engineers with BL Companies, we making the technical portion of the presentation this evening. I do wanna point out, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, if you take a look at Erin's environmental planners' report from June ten, which she was kind enough to share with us, it does provide some significant background history, I'm sure you're familiar with the site, I suspect Erin knows the site probably as well as any in the town of Wallingford, uh, but we've been here several times, um, and, uh, part of the presentation, we're going to explain how this particular application is so significantly different, different in the sense that it has a much lesser impact, actually, according to our expert, no impact on our wetlands, on your wetland system, uh, so, the applicant has heard the comments from, uh, staff, has heard the comments from the commission, has heard comments from the public, and we're here before you, uh, with a presentation that discusses the very significant reduction in size of the development, and, uh, and again, Chris will go through that as part of the presentation. We had meetings with your staff, uh, last week, and they were very productive, uh, one of the things that, uh, came out of that is some changes to this final plan that's been submitted to you, and it's before you tonight, and again, Chris will talk to that, but, um, we are awaiting an update from Eric Davison, who submitted the initial wetland and biological assessment and impact report. His initial report, based upon the original submission, uh, was that there was no, uh, negative impact on the quality and functionality of your wetland system, uh, and this is even lesser yet, uh, so the change that was made reduced any impact on the, uh, or activity within that upland review area, let alone nothing transpiring within the wetlands themselves. So with it, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna turn it over to, uh, Chris, and he'll go through the, the plan that's before you.
I hear microphones are important for this, so we get that recorded, perfect. Uh, for the record, uh, my name is Chris Gagnon, I'm a professional engineer licensed, uh, here in Connecticut, I'm with BL Companies, we're out of three fifty-five Research Parkway in, uh, Meriden, um, and I'm here to, uh, provide, uh, kind of an overview of, of the project itself, we have, uh, Jeff Dewey here with me, he's a senior engineer at BL Companies and was intimately involved with the design and detailed, um, calculations, et cetera, associated with the application in front of you, um, uh, to, to reiterate, um, the application in front of you, uh, has, uh, evolved, uh, not only from the previous applications, but from our first submittal, uh, on this application, based on, um, I think, very constructive and, uh, informative meetings that we've had with, uh, town staff, um, while it's not a wetland regulation, there is a new regulation, uh, in the zoning regulations with respect to this property and its relationship to the watershed, so, um, some of the design has evolved based on, um, interpretations and then, um, comments from, uh, Eric Kruger, so, um, we'll get into that with a little bit of the detailed design, but I think it's important to just note that, um, what we have in front of you not only is a culmination of the, the previous comments and responses, uh, that we've worked on, um, it also is an evolution of this actual application based on, um, the collaboration with town staff, and I, you know, like to be on the record thanking them for their, um, work with us on this. Um, so, the site itself is, um, five Research Parkway, you guys are, I'm sure, well aware of it, um, the area of development that we are proposing to work on today is the area where the old, um, building was, uh, prior to its demolition, um, so we're working on the southern side of the property, south of the muddy river, and we are proposing, um, what is a four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-square-foot warehouse building, um, and associated parking, a guard shack, and other utilities, and stormwater management, um, the intent of what is in front of you today is to present an application to your commission as well as the Planning and Zoning Commission that is in compliance, uh, with the regulations, um, so the, the size of this building, um, the number of parking spaces, the number of loading spaces, uh, is intended to, uh, comply with not only your regulations, but with the, uh, site plan application requirements, uh, of the Planning and Zoning Commission, so, while not all of that is purview of you folks, it is important to, um, understand the, the why of what we're, we're presenting in front of you today. Um, so, this proposed structure is, like I said, located approximately in the location of the, um, demolished, uh, building that was up there, um, we are proposing, uh, what is known as a dual-loaded warehouse, so we have proposed loading docks on both sides of the warehouse, along with trailer parking, uh, located along the, the northern side and eastern side of the development, and then we have, uh, also proposed, um, three-hundred-and-fifty-eight parking spaces, um, to serve the site that are located south and southwest of the proposed warehouse. This is fairly similar to the, um, southern portion of the development, when this was the dual warehouse submittal in the past, um, but there have been some minor upgrades to the site plan, uh, to ensure compliance with the new regulations, um, you know, little things, for example, um, the islands that we're depicting, um, are now required due to the planning and zoning regulations, so there's been some slight modifications to the parking lot, um, the islands that we have here, uh, along the run of parking is another adjustment that we've made, uh, to be in compliance, so, it's, it's not exactly the same as the southern development, but it's, it's generally the same with a few of these, um, minor upgrades intended to, um, demonstrate compliance with the, with the planning and zoning regulations, um, so this is, it's not all warehouse, it's a four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand square feet of warehouse with, uh, ten-thousand square feet of office, so that is the, um, that is the, the proposed use, um, the total number of dock spaces is a hundred and five, and then we have a ninety-seven trailer parking spaces, um, around it. The plan is to utilize the existing access into the property, we are proposing to, uh, perform maintenance, as well as, um, there's some utility installation and other work that will be going on, um, along the road, uh, but, one, I think, very important, um, improvement to this plan versus, um, previous applications that we have in front of you is that, in previous applications, to make the access to the parking area work, we had to propose significant grading in between the ponds and, uh, retaining walls and things like that, um, this application does not propose any of that, the only work that we are doing in this area is maintenance of the road and some utility installation, we are proposing to, um, demolish the existing guard shack there, so we also have a little bit of work in this area, in the upland review area, but the, the, the only work here is, is some utilities and maintenance and some demolition, which is, I think, a significant, uh, improvement from previous applications, it really reduces the construction activity in this area, and, um, if this wasn't in front of you folks for, uh, new development, it's my understanding that just maintaining the road in between the ponds wouldn't even be a regulated activity, because it's already disturbed, and, um, so, so the, um, the proposed work in between the existing ponds is also, in my opinion, a significant improvement from what was proposed before, um, like I said, there's, there's some utility work in there, and then, um, we have the, the parking lot for the vehicles, and then we also have the vehicle flow path for the, um, the trucks which will access the warehouse, um, you'll see that we have two driveways, essentially, one is for the passenger vehicles and one is for the trucks, this is a very important safety feature to these types of development, we've found that in segregating these traffic flows, it really makes the parking lot a lot safer, and it allows the, um, workers to access the building, and you never need to cross the, uh, the, the paths of the trucks, so it's a very important safety feature that, that these are separate from one another, and I think that's important, while we don't have, this, this path doesn't have any, uh, direct upland review area impacts or anything like that, I think it's an important thing to note as to why we would have these two driveways, rather than putting all of the traffic in one location, it's a, it's a significant safety, um, safety improvement, um, so, that's a general overview of, of what we are proposing, um, I, I suppose we could talk a little bit about the site in general, but that, uh, certainly feels like something that we've been through numerous times, um, so we can cover that if, if there are, are questions, but I really wanted to focus on, um, what we are proposing over here. Moving over to, um, the, the evolution of the design, just for a moment, I want to show the impact plan that we had prepared based on the original submission, uh, back in May, and we had proposed a sand filter in this location that was, um, just northeast of the, uh, existing pond, and, um, based on interpretations from, uh, Mr. Kruger, it is our understanding now that the proposed construction in this area, um, during the time of the construction would disturb soils within the hundred-foot wet, uh, stream and water body, um, buffer zone that is in the new regulations, so, we have since revised the design to remove any, um, proposed earthwork from in that one hundred foot, that's obviously not your wetland buffer, but, but it is, it is all, they're all related together, um, but that also has the, um, I think, important improvement, where you see that there's this little bit of green right here, was proposed upland review area earthwork in the original application, based on the evolution of the application, based on Mr. Kruger's comments, we have now eliminated, um, the, the earthwork in this area and moved the proposed disturbance, um, while it was a reaction to his hundred-foot pond regulation, it, the, it has the effect of moving the proposed disturbance even farther away from, from your regulated area. Additionally, um, we were proposing, we, we had some proposed, um, impacts that were related to utility connections, uh, that happened to be, um, in the, in the review area on the road, this was all road construction in coordination and collaboration with Mr. Kruger, again, um, we have relocated this utility work out of the upland review area, so that's, it's, it's the, the evolution of this application, I think, has improved based on the collaboration with, um, with town staff, so I just wanted to, um, start there, uh, clicking over to, clicking over to, clicking over to, did I skip it, Jeff? Where is it? Clicking over to EH five, thank you, Jeff, this plan now depicts the post-construction, um, activities, uh, related to the, uh, proposed development, um, as you can see, the, uh, the, the earthwork, the limited disturbance, um, everything is outside of both your fifty-foot upland review area and outside of the one-hundred-foot water body and, um, uh, pond, uh, buffer as well, so, we've, um, you know, very thankful to town staff for interpreting, uh, providing the interpretation of the, the regulation, and, um, we have adjusted, um, the design accordingly to not only, uh, respect the hundred-foot, uh, water body, but, uh, like I said, it has the nice effect of moving the development even further away from your folks' fifty-foot, uh, upland review area, which you can see depicted here in this, uh, magenta, um, dashed line. The, uh, other quote-unquote, wetland-related impact is related to, um, impervious area, so we have provided a map showing, uh, an analysis of existing impervious area to remain, depicted in the blue, uh, existing impervious area which will be removed, which is depicted in this, what is that, salmon fuchsia pink, and the, um, proposed impervious area depicted in the green, um, so, we, uh, the end result is an, uh, increase in impervious area of approximately eleven acres, but the footprint of disturbance is essentially within the old, um, the old footprint, as you can see from this pink line, um, with respect to where the wetlands are, our footprint follows and is inside of the old disturbance, and then, really where our, our increase in impervious areas, it's in the footprint of the building, as you can see, our proposed building is essentially in the same location as the, um, where the previous building was, it's the previous building was somewhat of a funky shape, so we're, we're, we're in, we're in that same footprint, we do have some additional impervious, um, for the, for the trailer parking up here, but again, all very similar to, um, to the previous, uh, application, um, should note that the, the previous double warehouse application, um, actually proposed upwards of thirty-five acres of new impervious area, so, we've cut our application in half, and we've cut our proposed impervious area by two-thirds, uh, when compared to, um, the, the previous application that was in, in front of you folks and improved. Another, um, final component of, there it is, clicked on it the first time, um, another component of, um, uh, regulated activities is, uh, the construction phase, uh, regulated activities, so, this plan depicts, um, the, the phase of our construction, um, where we are assuming everything is demolished, and we have disturbed areas, and the, the earthwork is going on, um, in these, in these pockets, uh, and the, the erosion control is designed per the regulations, so we have multiple, um, sediment traps that are sized based on the, the contributing area, and these sediment traps, um, again, reacting to comments that we've gotten from, um, review staff, peer reviewers, et cetera, um, rather than have, uh, multiple discharges, uh, into the, the regulated area, this erosion control design incorporates a collection swale at the discharge of all the sediment traps, which goes into a final settling basin prior to the, the discharge, so the erosion control phase, um, activities are the, the discharge from the, um, from the erosion control, um, measures, best management practices, um, so this is a temporary related, related activity, um, due to that, uh, potential discharge, uh, however, just remember that, um, all of this runoff has, um, not only the prescribed temporary sediment traps, but we also provide an extra layer of protection by installing this collection swell and an additional settling basin prior to discharge, so little belts and suspenders, um, going on there in terms of the erosion control design, and then, an additional, um, temporary regulated activity would be the discharge from this, um, other sediment basin, so we have two, um, two discharges from the sediment basins as construction phase, uh, activities, um, I should note, um, I didn't do that as we were discussing the, where's number five, where are you, number five, there we are, um, permanent, um, potential activities also include the stormwater discharge from the sand filter here and from the, uh, stormwater basin, um, so there are the, um, these activities, the, the stormwater discharge, so, um, so that, that covers the impacts, that covers, uh, temporary impacts, proposed impacts, I think it covers the evolution of this application based on town staff comments, and it covers a little bit of what was before you in the past, however, we totally understand that it's, this application needs to be on its own merits, um, we only are providing minor references to the old application, um, just to provide a, a little bit of context, um, as far as the stormwater management design and erosion control design goes, um, the stormwater management has been designed to comply, uh, with not only the state regulations, but your regulations, um, there are, um, diversion manholes which go to, um, which go to, uh, treatment, um, structures, what's the technical?
Hydrodynamic.
The hydrodynamic separators, there's a bunch of different ones, so I just wanted to make sure I got it right, so we have diversion manholes which go to hydrodynamic separators for the, um, water quality flow, which then go to a sand filter which then discharge into the stormwater basin, which then discharge out, so all of these have been designed to comply with the regulations related to, um, not only your wetlands, state water quality requirements, but the requirements of the watershed protection, um, zone that, that we are now in, um, and same for the erosion control, we have the phased erosion control design, um, which is also intended to comply with not only the state regulations, but to protect the, um, the watershed of the watershed protection zone, um, I would like to ask Jeff to either comment, or if there's anything technical, um, other than the overview, if there was anything worth noting.
Uh, yes, just very briefly, uh, my name is Jeff Dewey, uh, licensed engineer in the state of Connecticut, with BL Companies, um, just so you know, as part of the design, there's also a decrease in the peak rate of run- of runoff from the site, from existing conditions, as well as a decrease in the volume of runoff from the site. So we've gone to great lengths with the, as, as you've seen before, great lengths with the stormwater management system, not only for water quality protection, but water quantity as well.
How do you decrease the volume?
Uh, basically you store it. Um, so the, the main basin for the site is huge and it'll store it and, uh, infiltrate into the ground.
The volume still leaves the site, you mean that statement that decreased the volume?
That, that's a good point. We, that's a very good point and I've never considered it that way, sir, and that is true because it infiltrates through the ground, so we consider that a decrease, but you're right, it gets into the groundwater table.
Have you done that calculations? Will this ground accept infiltration?
We have...
You have a unique ground situation up there.
Yes, yeah, I remember that from the, uh, previous application and we spoke about it. And down where the main basin is, is, uh, not the exact same soil as we have up on the hill. Um, we did some, do some testing down there, but as we move forward, I will provide you with, uh, additional information in accordance with that.
I was just wondering if that decrease had anything to do with the fact that you're using half of the site versus the previous plan?
Well, cer- certainly, uh, Jeff Dewey, again, with BL Companies, with the reduced amount of impervious area and activities that we're proposing, the amount of stormwater management was greatly reduced and yes, that was able to help us with the, uh, calculations that way.
Again, Chris Gagnon from BL Companies. We also are proposing, um, to handle the roof runoff, we do propose, uh, large perforated pipes that are installed at the perimeter of the underground, at the perimeter of the building, and the roof runoff is initially discharged to these pipes, um, to also provide a, a level of, of infiltration, um, as well. So, so where, where we can take clean runoff from the roof, uh, it's clean because there's no brake dust or tires or salt or coffee cups or anything like that, uh, it's clean runoff is, um, initially discharged to large infiltration pipes, uh, surrounding the, the building, which also helps in our stormwater calculations, it's, it's called, um, a, a discharge that you can, um, that you can remove from your, your calculation. So you, you can, um, um, so we, we did propose these, um, is that, um, discharge excluded from the final calculation? Yep. So, so that is another way which, uh, runoff is reduced, uh, the, the infiltration is, is how you, um, how you reduce that, uh, how you reduce some runoff.
You, you, they, they tore the building down and it, and it went down into the ground, what, two or three floors, I, I believe, and took all the rubble and filled the hole with the rubble from the building. That to me sounds like the greatest catch basin in the world. So I can't see how any water ran off the site, it all ran into the pit of the old building. So it's interesting that your calculations are coming up with some numbers and, and just from, uh, a, a map, not seeing what the actual site is. Is that true?
We did not model the rubble hole that is, is up there. That certainly isn't required based on regulations. It's a, it's a overall historic analysis of stormwater runoff. There's still all the parking lots out there, um, that are, uh, receiving runoff, um, right now, uh, so there, there may be a portion that, um, that the rain falls into the building, but that is not typically required.
Are you going to eliminate the asphalt parking lot that's there now?
We are, the plan is to demolish the existing parking lot on the southern side of the property and reconstruct it.
How about the northern side?
Right now, the plan on the northern side is we are not going to touch anything on the northern side of the site.
Are you done with your presentation?
I, I think this is the beginning of the initial part of the presentation. We understand that, you know, the expectation is that there's still other documents to provide you, such as the updated, uh, wetland biological impact assessment, a report from Mr. Davison.
So you're, you're, you're not complete, your application is not complete then?
Well, the application's complete, uh, that we've made a change based upon staff review, so we're revising some of our plans. The, the reason for, uh, I think, opening the public hearing was to give both you and the public an opportunity to see what the plan, uh, looks like at this point, get the comments, uh, that we're happy to entertain and then come back at July 27th, hopefully with, uh, with the rest of the information. Uh, you know, my expectation on a project this size, I wasn't, I don't want to be presumptuous and think you're going to vote tonight anyway, but, uh, you know, there's, there is more information to provide to you and, and basically that's because we took the 15 days between the June 1st meeting and tonight to meet with your staff. They did come up with some, you know, valid, uh, changes proposed to the site which we've incorporated into it and that's why you have the new set of plans. And you notice from the environmental planner's report, she doesn't have a completed report yet because she doesn't have all the documentation.
From both town staff as well.
Yeah.
Well, we'll make this easy then. Any comments from the commissioners, Caroline?
No, thank you.
Ally?
Not yet, not now.
Jeff?
No.
Jimmy?
Yeah, a, a couple of questions. I was kind of curious with the ravines in this area, did your engineers do the calculations necessary to determine the slope as to where you begin the upland review area in a ravine area?
We are depicting the same upland review areas as we've had, uh, throughout the history of this application.
Yeah, I'm more concerned with compliance rather than the history that was before.
We use the same methodology that we had used.
Okay, then that's a no? The, the question is, in the area of the ravine, where there is steep slopes of a specific slope angle, it requires that the upland review begin at the top of the slope, not where the wetland is. Uh, that's clearly spelled out in the regulations and I'm asking the question if in these ravine areas, ignoring history, were those ravines calculated for the degree of slope whereby you place your upland review, which is very significant in our review of what is the impact?
Sir, does, does the regulations, uh, clearly identify what slope would define a ravine?
Yes.
Because they are, I mean, obviously there's very varying slopes through there, so there would be portions of ravine and portions of non-ravine areas.
Precisely.
So it would be kind of a, a very spotty analysis.
Never said it was easy to do, but that is the job of the engineer to look into. Uh, that was one thing. The other thing stated at the very beginning of this application, it was essentially brought in for the, in, public interest. However, since that time and in reviewing these, um, proposals, I have some concerns that was, wasn't even brought up in your review, wetland concerns about the activities going on, on the east side of the property where, is that almost a 90-foot vertical rise on the back bank that you intend to fortify with a permanent kind of a wall barrier? As an example on OM1, if you look at that, and, um, what concerns me with that is, good Lord, you open up that degree of a slope and I can see why you have all those separated settling out ponds. That is a very, very, very significant concern for this commission as to wetland concerns. It is also a significant concern for the history, the long history of this area, as we have experienced in this town, when that back wall starts to be cut away like they did for the original project. I don't think there was a flocculent in existence that could have handled what came out of that slope. And what I see here is a proposal that is significantly greater in the amount of material being taken out of that back wall. That's a huge opening and God help you guys if there's a major storm during that process. If it only took a week or two to do, yeah, that'd be pretty good, but if this takes a long time, that's a serious, serious concern for this commission. And I just wanted to point that out at this, beginning of this application. History notwithstanding, this is very important.
Understood. I think we can look in. Apologies, microphone. Um, Chris Gagnon again, BL Companies. Uh, we will, uh, investigate the, uh, construction phasing and timing of that operation. I think it's, uh, an appropriate question and would be happy to look at it for you.
Thank you. Couple, couple things. Jim brought up flocculent and you didn't, and I think we've discovered that this site needs flocculent for, to treat the sediment. This product, uh, this area doesn't let the sediment drain out of the runoff.
Jeff Dewey from BL, um, as previously, when we discussed the flocculent, that is part of our, um, erosion control plan, but only as an emergency condition. Multiple people can for, call for the application, whether it's the erosion inspector on site, the, uh, erosion inspector as part of the SWIP, town staff, town engineer, or the contractor himself can, uh, call for application of the flock logs. And it's the same materials and the same company that we, uh, provided information for you in the last application.
I certainly hope that you can get the flocculent down in time in an emergency situation because the sediment doesn't drop out of this area. The other thing is, is you talk about utilities and I believe you were talking about utilities in between the two ponds. What, what do you, what utilities are you referring to?
Uh, in between the two ponds and the driveway, there's, uh, pretty much everything. There's telecom, electrical, sanitary, um...
What are you proposed to put in there?
Uh, we're, we're just tying into the existing waterline. We're not changing the utilities that are in the road between the two ponds, we're connecting to the utilities at the end of the ponds. We're not changing the grade of the roadway between the two ponds. Basically what we're proposing is to do some milling and paving in there, so it's just going to resurface the road in there. Uh, there might be some minor utility adjustments to handholds or what have you that are there, but we're not changing anything in the road.
Well, your, your early presentation talked the activity in that area. I assumed it was that area because we were talking wetlands involvement was, uh, utility access or some changes. And maintenance, what's maintenance? Is that just snow plowing?
Uh, certainly there'll be snow plowing during the winter months and so forth, but during construction maintenance, we're talking about resurfacing the roadway in this area.
Well, sometimes it's better off saying what the, what it's going to be. Aaron, you got any questions, issues right now? I'm sure there's a stack of them.
Yes, I guess some particular, just, I'm curious, what's the height of that wall that Commissioner Heilman was concerned about the cut behind the building? What's the height of the cut when it's done? Roughly?
There, it's, it varies a lot because basically it's what we're proposing is a two-to-one slope and it looks a lot worse than it is because it's a steep slope now, so we're basically chasing the slope up the hill. Um, so, and Chris, thank you, Chris, for zooming in. So, as you can see, the wall is approximately 10 feet high. And then there's a second terrace wall as you, as you move to the south.
And again, Chris Gagnon from BL Companies, you can see there's a 440 proposed contour here, there's a 460 proposed contour under it, so there's a proposed...
Is that answering your question?
No.
It's not answering the question. Is it a 10-foot wall, a 20-foot wall, a 50-foot wall?
Well, it varies.
And is some of it going to...
Well, then you got to work with them on the...
The high point. But some of it's not going to be a wall, right? It's going to be sheer rock, right? With no, you don't need a wall, right? Just, it's like a rock face.
No, I was attempting to answer the question by speaking about the difference between the proposed contours and the existing contours. In this location here, we have a 440 contour that's over a 458 contour. So this is an 18-foot, um, cut in terms of earthwork right here. By the time you get up to the top of the hill, it's, we're, we're tying into existing grade. So the, the slope here goes from 420 to 450, so it's a 30-foot tall slope, but the, the amount of cut associated with it ranges from plus or minus 30 feet, down to 20 feet, down to five feet, down to zero feet. And then we also have a wall which varies, um, from down to nothing, bottom a wall, top a wall, 410, 410, so obviously this is where the end of the wall is. We have a 10-foot wall here, um, we have a 14-foot wall here, so it's all depicted on the drawings with respect to the retaining wall and then, um, the, the height of the slope and the cut and fill associated with the slope.
So Commissioner Heilman was talking about concerns during construction with silt, the silt, which will be suspended in the flows, et cetera, but what about the weeping out of the cut? In other words, how are you going to handle the weeping? I remember last time there was, this was a concern, but that was in the northern side of the property, so do you anticipate groundwater weeping through this 30-foot slice?
Yes, we, any, uh, construction project anticipates, um, possibly needing to de-water in cuts. It's a standard operating, uh, procedure, uh, you have methods to do that, you, um, if you have an area that needs to be de-watered, you pump it into, um, either, uh, these big giant bladders, which are filter bags, and then you discharge to sediment traps and then you discharge where, where it all discharges. So there are, um, required prescribed ways in which de-watering of any excavation, uh, occurs and the same would hold true whether it's for a slope or whether it's for a utility trap.
Oh, I don't, I don't mean just when you cut it, I mean forever, weeping forever.
Yeah, there, and there's, there's, retaining walls have weep holes, they have drainage behind them, uh, so they're, you know, this, this wetland application doesn't necessarily include a construction-level detail on all the retaining walls, um, but every single retaining wall, whether it's supporting a cut slope or whether it's supporting a fill slope, is required to have appropriate footing, footing drainage, weep holes, that's, that's the structural...
I'm, I'm sure you'll engineer it well. I was just referring, last time we had to run the water from the, at the bottom of the cut. We had to ru, we, the application ran it in a pipe around and discharged it way down the hill into the well.
Aaron, you can work that out with them at a later time. Do you have anything else?
Yeah, I just, maybe to run through what's not presented tonight, just...
Well...
Meaning a list, a laundry list, that they're aware they're not done, but what we can look forward to next time? We can look for...
Well, make it very short because we've got a long meeting.
Number one, since we're the well and commission here, the, um, the, the wetland scientist report on, detailed report on the regulated activities, um, the, the detail on them, spelling them out with a square foot, foot for each one, spelled out, a square foot of temporary impact or, or permanent impact, and then the analysis about how that impacts the muddy river, how that impacts any wetlands and so on. Um, then we don't have, we did have a report come in from the water division just basically saying the, a revised plan came in June 8th, so hi- his comments, this is Eric Kruger, senior engineer, water and sewer division, he's not ready to comment on it, essentially that's what he's saying. Um, I did not get comments in from the town engineer, I know she wants to comment on this. I will point out to the commission that so far, I mean, the town engineer, I, I asked her directly that she, there was no need, she felt there was no need to get an outside peer reviewer. On the previous two applications, we got an outside peer review of the engineering and an outside peer review of the wetlands impact situation, two different, um, two different reports. Um, I, I'm just putting that out there, you might want to consider that, uh, and, um, that the town engineer felt it was small enough that she could handle the review of it, as opposed to getting outside help. Also, last time there was an independent site monitor, um, that in the conditions of approval, an independent site monitor that the applicant had agreed to was going to be involved and go out there virtually all the time during the construction of it. What they, what they're going to talk about last time is that maybe some details on the blasting and details on the flood, the flood contingency plan, or worst-case scenario, big storm flood contingency hurricane plan for, for this site during construction. That's what, that's what everybody, I want to hear about too. Um, and, uh, I guess that, that's what I'm looking forward to hearing next.
All right. This is a public hearing and I want to share some time with the public, so if there, at this time... So if there, at this time, if there's any public that would like to speak, come forward, please.
Ed Bradley, Two Hampton Trail. Mr. Chairman, I know you have a long agenda. I have, you have my letter there. They're basically, it's not a presentation. They're more talking points. And my concern is the increase of runoff, soil erosion, and the downstream impact. Also, I share what other people have commented on. But since you have such a long agenda and the application doesn't appear to complete, would that be a correct assumption?
From what I understand, that's correct.
Would the public hearing still be open at that time? If I, if it is, I'll reserve.
It absolutely will be open.
Okay. I just want to make one comment. This book I have is the history of Spring Lake, 1938 through 1965. There was never ever mention of downstream flooding. Today, you know what exists there. You know the issues there. But again, I'll, I'll reserve this until the next meeting.
Does the applicant want to get Mr. Bradley's address and discuss any items with him? I'm sure he'll be glad to give it to you.
Thank you. There you go. Perfect.
Okay. Any other comments from the public?
Can you hear me? Do I have to do something? Can you hear me? Okay. Jane Ronka, 54, High Hill Road. Some of the questions have been answered, but Erin talked about the notifications that went around. I did notice there's no visible posting, so I just have a few questions about if, if all the notifications went out that are supposed to. Have all the parties that could be affected by blasting been notified? You mentioned the 100 feet.
Wait a minute. Oh, you gotta talk to me.
I'm sorry.
You gotta help me here. I, I didn't understand the question.
Okay, so I'm just have a question that all the notifications went out to the public that should have? By requirements?
I believe that was announced, Erin announced that all public received it.
Right, I heard what she said. I, for example, there's no visible sign and I don't know who requires that. If it's BZC or inland wetlands.
It's not a zone change or anything. I don't know if signs are required.
So if you don't know, I don't. And that's why I'm just asking the question.
Well, hang on a minute. We'll see if we get the answer. Signs aren't required for public hearing, are they?
We don't, but planning and zoning requires signage for special permits.
A special permit. This is, this is a public hearing. So no signs are necessary.
Or zoning. Okay. And then have all the parties that are, would be affected by the blasting that was mentioned, have they been notified?
All budding property owners have been notified and further than the budding. What's the requirement?
Well, they notified within 100 feet.
100 feet of the property have been notified.
And if you blast rock, that only travels 100 feet?
Well, if they blast, they blast rock, I don't think that, I don't think they have to notify anybody that they're blasting rock. I don't know that for a fact.
Okay. A later question I have might explain why I asked that. And it sounds like the water department's already been involved in.
Water department's involved, very much involved.
I'm sorry.
Yep.
So regarding blasting, I just want the board to, or committee, I don't know what you're. Keep in mind that that neighborhood that sits on that ledge, High Hill Road, that will be blasted, are not provided water through the Wallingford Water Department. We all have private wells and septic systems that were drilled over 30 years ago. So again, I don't know on that wall that's been talked about, how that might affect our existing buildings. And that's why I'm concerned about the blasting. So, so what resources are in place to protect those Wallingford residents from any possible repercussions from blasting like cracked foundations, well collapse, contamination that could happen?
See, you're really getting into some planning and zoning issues.
Okay. And that's, you could tell me that. That's fine. Just past meetings said that the cause and effect is hard to determine, so I'm just very concerned about that. And that, that answer doesn't support the residents that are there in case something happens. What protections will be in place to monitor that construction and site operation do not lead to contamination of all the aquifers? Again, our, our wells are there. So if something disrupts, not only McKenzie Reservoir, but our own aquifers. And my understanding of aquifers, you can't tell which ones service which wells. So how do those residents get protected that something's not going to affect our wells? Again, since you can't detect which aquifer feeds it, I'm just very concerned about that. The habit, I forget what you call the assessment for the fauna and flora in the area. It sounds like it's being updated, which I'm glad to hear. I just want to also make sure since things have been torn down and with the pandemic, a lot more nature seems to be able to have done things. So I want to make sure that that list of what animals are there. I know we have bobcats, eagles, salamanders. But if we review it today, is there any other animals that we need to be concerned about? So the other question, and I know there was an image of how much of the impervious area is added or subtracted. I just know that that building that's proposed is, is the size of eight football fields. In that overlay, it looks to me like much bigger than the C-shaped building that used to be there. So when you take that consider, in consideration, 105 docking bays, 97 trailer spaces, 358 parking spots, plus the eight football field size, it seems like a large concentrated increase in impervious surface to me. And I thought we were trying to minimize that kind of thing in a watershed area. So besides the runoff consideration, is the heat that would radiate off of those added surfaces and vehicles appropriately, is it considered in, in this about having a heat sink or something like that? And just finally, for the record, I'm against this proposal and feel like the committee is again being asked, asked to consider a mega warehouse, which is not appropriate for such an important watershed area. Thanks.
Okay, don't run away.
Challenge accepted.
I would get those questions sent over to Erin.
Okay.
Rather than having the downloft over the tape. And Erin, you'll get them to the applicant? Those questions, ask them. And the other thing is, did you have any well issues the last time they blasted there?
I wasn't there at that point. That's been over 30 years, probably, or 20.
You're right. Okay.
Could I ask this lady's name, please? Mr. Jane Vitale?
Jane Ronka, W R O N K A.
I did not hear it. Please.
I'm sorry, Jane.
Why don't you go, go over there.
I'll write it down.
W R O N N A?
W R O N K A.
Okay, Jane Ronka? Oh, good. Thank you. Is that your statement? Oh, excellent. Thank you.
Any other comments? Come on up.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm Leid Kopfer, Whiffle Tree Road, here in Wallingford. I live on the other side of town, but I am a town water customer. So my main concern is really the muddy river. I don't even try to delve into the southern part of the proposed development. I trust that the environmental planner and the water division take care of those details. My point of concern is really the northwestern or in the pictures, the left bottom part of the proposed project. If I read that correct, there's a 40-foot wall and I'm referring to page, let me find it, sorry. GD 6, the crating of the plan. If I read that correctly, there's a 40-foot high retaining wall on that side, right next to the muddy river with all the associated construction issues and, and the, what Mr. Heilmann mentioned, the ravine. So if I, if I can retrace back, the importance of the muddy river, the main tributary stream to the McKenzie reservoir, public water supply. It feeds about 75% of the surface supply for the town, about 39,000 people. So this is, no offense to the box turtles and other animals there, but this is my drinking water. This is very personal to me. That's why the Plan of Conservation and Development asks to protect our drinking water supply. That's why the state's MS4 program asks to reduce impervious surface in watersheds. And back in 2012, we were, that area for the muddy river watershed was at 70% and we're clearly increasing it even more. And the City Public Health Code, which I think the water division bases their regulations or their, their guidelines on, also asks, "The design of stormwater drainage facilities shall be such as to minimize soil erosion and maximize absorption of pollutants by the soil." And I do appreciate the efforts of the applicant, don't get me wrong. I'm also a taxpayer and a mom and I love all the tax money coming in for the schools. Don't get me wrong, but I, in this case, mostly a water customer. So I have a few questions to the applicant, if that's possible, a few questions to the water division, and a few questions to the, to the inland wetland water course commission. Would that be okay?
Yes. I will comment that this is why the water department helped create new regulations to protect that drinking water supply.
Right.
For the same concerns you have.
Yep.
So there are a lot of people looking at every application in that area to protect the drinking water supply.
Right, and I appreciate that. I think it's essential, really.
Very much so.
So to the applicant, what, I appreciate you coming back a third time, but it's still a warehouse in the same area. So what alternative uses for this property have you considered? And why is it still a warehouse?
They don't have to answer it.
Okay. All right, I'll just keep going.
You can submit the questions.
Yep. What alternative design have you considered that would keep the warehouse, especially this northwestern corner, farther away from the muddy river itself? Again, I'm not talking about the wetlands in the southwestern part. I'm talking about the northwest corner of this particular application. Then there's 105 loading docks, 97 trailer parking spaces, plus all the passenger vehicles. Can you estimate how many trips per day of heavy-duty trucks will be going through that particular corner right next to the muddy river? 40-feet-high wall, I mentioned that. Can you tell us more about the trash compactor? That's in the same corner right there. What kind of trash compactor is that? And how can you ensure that no trash reaches the muddy river? Does the propane storage tank have to be on that corner? Again, I have this all written down. If, if it takes too long, I can, I'm happy to leave a copy later on. And then just one other small detail on the plan, page demolition number two. It seems like the silt fence ends before, if I read the contours correct, some sort of ditch during the construction phase. So I was just wondering why does it end right there? And anything that goes into that ditch would go right around the fence and into the muddy river. Questions to the water division. Are, do they have historical data on the water quality of the effluent from the former Bristol Myersqueb site during the BMS occupancy, during the vacancy, during the recent demolition, and now the idle phase? Are there any differences in the water quality that could be related to the different times? Water division has submitted multiple memos and concerns with the last two application for warehouse projects, both with the construction and the, the operation of the application. Does the water division think that this project, project as it is currently applied, as the application now depicted, can protect or improve the water quality of the muddy river and our major public drinking water supply watershed? And also, does, does the water division feel like the previous concerns had all been met with, with previous applications? Down to the really last single detail, because as I said, this is essential and the devil is in the detail. And finally, some questions to the commissions. The last two applications had public hearings for significant impact. I understand that this is only half the last application. However, compared to the former Bristol Myersqueb site, it's still almost doubling the impervious surface, both the building, which is not clean. It's cleaner, but it's still not the same as infiltration. And most specifically, the parking lots. And then they also add a lot of truck traffic, which to my knowledge was not part of the Bristol Myersqueb property. So why did the commission judge this application as not having a significant impact? And will you make that a significant impact project? Because I think it is significant to our public water. Just a technical question. Last time, the plans and the correspondence, correspondents were posted online. To my knowledge, they are not right now. So assuming that this public hearing is continued, could you post them online so the public has an easier time and we don't need to go and, and take our hair's time to look at the paper copies? If I may quote from the inland wetland water course regulations, from the very first paragraph of the resolution, "The protection of the inland wetland and water courses is essential to the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of the town of Wallingford." And section one, title and authority, "The water, the inland wetland water course's commission's purpose is to balance the need for economic growth of the state and the use of its land with the need to protect its environment and ecology, and in this case, our public drinking water." So my question is, how will the commission weigh the criteria for decision mentioned in sections 10, number 2, A to G? And how will the commission ensure that the most feasible and prudent alternatives will be considered that might have less impact on our drinking water supply, which is regulation 10-2B and 10-3? That's it for the moment. Thank you very much for taking all those questions and I'll leave this.
Very good. Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Okay, then we'll table this public hearing until, what date, Erin?
July 27.
July 27.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. All right. Okay, going under old business. A 22, 3.2, 155 East Street, Fergie Management. Erin, where's the easel that's usually here?
Don't know. I mean, I could look in this room. They need one. It's been there the whole time.
Let me check these out.
Was that the next one?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
No, E1. It's E1. It's a Gen 81?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Only still warm off the press.
Almost.
Thank you.
Okay, so when do you have time to read this?
For the record, I'm Lyndon Lyndon, landscape architect from Weathersfield, representing the applicant, Fergie Management Corporation. Since the last hearing, we've had a staff meeting with the town staff on May thirteenth. We received a couple of reports from Erin in May that we've responded to with letters that are in the package that you have. We have a revised set of plans that's in the package that you have, that I have here. And we just received the last review from Erin on Friday, and this is the response letter to that package. Because we had submitted the twelve copies of this stuff on the same day, on Friday. I guess I'm gonna go, is it on? So at the staff meeting in May, we met with planning, with Erin and the town engineer, and Tim from Economic Development was there. We had a good discussion about where we stood and where we needed to go, and what information still needed to be supplied. And most of that had to do with the town engineer and the drainage aspect of the project. We had given last month some information in the form of sketches for the town engineer to see what our proposal was for a couple of things that were in Erin's last reports. We reviewed those and had some discussion about that, and have incorporated that information into this set of plans. The two major things in that was the detention basin that we were creating on the east side of the site where the work is. The question, her question and the discussion that we had about that was, that detention system has a certain size and a certain volume. The question was, is there actually going to be that much stormwater that's actually going to make it to that basin? If you remember, originally, the thought was is that we were going to take the roof of the addition, tie it into the interior building drainage, which currently exits out the west side of the site into the riprap that goes directly to the river. There's no detention for that amount of water. And since we're adding this water, the question was, can we detain that water in our detention basin on this side? So the two big things that have changed on that is, yes, we could. We looked at this detention basin and have redesigned it and redid the drainage calculations for it. So the detention basin on this side originally came to about here. We increased it relatively significantly, about thirty percent bigger. We just, we made it a longer detention basin, and what we figured that we could do, based on her comments and suggestions, was we can now capture all of the water on the addition to the roof, and we're gonna pipe it into this detention basin. So it doesn't go out untreated and undetained on the west side of the site anymore. We're gonna put it into this new basin that we're creating here. So this new basin was enlarged to handle up to the one-hundred-year storm. For the pavement that we always were detaining over here, we now can take this roof and put it into here. The other thing that we did in that meeting that we discussed was the compensatory flood storage area, which, as we talked about last time, we did the test pits and found that there was no groundwater. And we talked about how the grading was gonna work there so that when the floodplain comes up, the water would flow into this low area and be able to flow back out. Originally, we were, it was a basin that was gonna hold water because we were gonna detain water from the roof, which we're now not doing. So we regraded this whole area so that the water will flow in and out the way it's supposed to in a floodplain area. So the volume of this is compensatory for the volume that we're filling with the building on the other side in the zone AE, FEMA flood zone. One of the comments, I think it's one of the first ones, one of the comments in Erin's latest review was, what is the depth of this basin? If you look at the plan closely, there's a thirty contour in the existing pavement in this area that we're taking that contour, wrapping it around the outside of this, and tying it back into the thirty contour that's over here, and this area gets cut down. The bottom spot grades on that are twenty-eight point five, so the answer to the question is, this is a foot and a half deep in this basin. And the volume of it is calculated for the volume that we're filling on the other side. So those are the two big things that came out of that meeting.
Let me ask you a question.
Yes.
Your new retention basin on the east side of the building. Have you done any test borings there?
And we talked about that last time, and in, I think it was in the last meetings thing we gave you, the borings that they did on this side of the building, structurally for the building foundation, they did four borings in this area. And they found groundwater at five feet and six feet at each of those.
What did they find at one foot, six inches? And I'm saying this only because I think on the other, whether we had compensatory storage area, you found fill.
Right.
Heavy fill, I mean, clay, you know, not very well drainage. Did you find that on the east side of the building? And where I'm going with it here...
Yep.
Pardon me? You did find it there?
I have the reports, I can dig through here and find it.
Well, here's where I'm going with it. We had another application in the same general area of town, and digging with a retention pond. And it was suggested to them, I think I made the suggestion, to dig down through the fill layer, get into the natural sand and gravel that's there, and in this case, in the five-foot number, and run a couple of pipes up to the bottom of your new retention pond. So it would recharge to the groundwater, getting through that heavy clay fill. That's a suggestion to your retention pond.
We could do that. And I know that the borings that they did on that side, they went down forty feet deep because they're looking to support a foundation. So the information for what those various layers are go down to forty feet, and we could look to see if...
Well, underneath the fill, you should hit sand and gravel. That's what they found over the other site in the same general area.
We'll look at that. The calculations, the drainage calculations for this detention system did not anticipate any infiltration into it. So, and that's why, that's one of the reasons why it's such a very large basin, because we weren't planning on any infiltration, because that top layer is...
Well, you get through the top layer with some creativity.
Yep.
You get infiltration. Now, your basin, is it a mowable basin? In other words, you're gonna mow it every time you cut the grass?
Yes.
Good.
Yes. The other question that was related to the compensatory flood area was that, right now, there's the riprap that goes out to the river. We have to remove some of that to be able to do the grading and drop the grade. And one of the questions was, what are we doing with the stockpile of that material? We've always had the stockpile area in this location, off of the pavement, up in the back corner. This blue line, your regulation, this is your upland review area. That's the only place that's not in your upland review area, so this is where stockpiling will go on. And that's addressed in the erosion control plans as to what they have to do for stockpiling materials and what kind of erosion controls they need to provide there. The next thing in the latest review was a clarification on impervious surface figures. So since the beginning of this, the very first original application had impervious surface numbers in there, and they were general. This is the amount of impervious now, this is the amount of impervious later. And those numbers were specifically for the area of work of the addition on the east-hand A couple of reviews later, we revised some, we clarified some of those numbers to what exactly is in the regulated area versus in the upland review area. We updated those numbers. In this last review, Erin asked us to provide numbers for basically the entire site. The hazardous waste cabinet in the back that was added on and got an administrative approval, that area was involved. So what we did, just in the past couple of days, was give you numbers, and it's in this letter what those numbers are. That will go onto the chart that's on the first page that has all the various impacts of impervious surface and FEMA flood areas and all that stuff. So we gave you existing and proposed square footage numbers of impervious surface, that's for the entire site. So that's the, that little chart that's at the bottom of the very first page. It's surprisingly to me, when I added up all the different areas and went through this whole thing, it's basically the same number, existing versus proposed. The area in the FEMA zone AE is a little bit higher, the area within the fifty-foot upland reviews is a little bit smaller, but basically the impervious surfaces are the same proposed as they are existing. Further on in the review, under other impacts, figures, and information, we were asked for the area of the existing basin that's by the side of the building that we're putting the building on top of. And I explained how we came up with the three-thousand-square-foot number. Basin that's cut there now is a big rectangle that's about two feet deep, which is approximately sixty-eight by twenty feet. When you do the drainage calculations for how much that basin can hold, it's, the way it was constructed, it's, the thirty-one contour is our limit. So if the engineer took the thirty-one contour and came up with a three-thousand-square-foot area, which is bigger than what was approved on the 2018 plans, and actually can store more water than what was approved on the 2018 plans. The fifty-foot upland review line that's shown on these plans now, we took the FEMA zone AE line, which encompasses the area over on the east side where the addition is. It also takes into account this existing basin on the west-hand side that has the cattails and stuff growing in it that we did some work on, which I'll talk about in a minute. So we took that line and we just offset it fifty feet. And wherever all of those different lines overlapped, we trimmed off all the lines to get you, this line goes this way, this line crosses over, there's, the fifty-foot line is there on the plan. The compensatory flood area is a little more than six thousand square feet. That's just listed on that L-1.0 chart as a number. That's never changed, it's always been a six-thousand-square-foot area. We've just changed the elevations for it. Comment on the line designation for the upland review area, we have it as FSB, we'll change that to URA. And there was a question about this yellow line. That's very hard to see because it's yellow. That yellow line is the setback from the edge of the river. And it basically stops right along the fence line that's out there on the property. It doesn't even come onto the physically active used part of the property. We can make that a lot more visible. One of the other questions was the ELUR area at the north end of the site. I'm gonna keep going back and forth. Just north of the end of the building, there's an area that's under a DEP permit with monitoring wells. They've been looking into with their lawyers who originally were involved with the DEP's permitting and monitoring of that. We still don't know whether it's closed or not. It's, takes a long time to get answers out of DEP, but we'll find out whether it's closed or not. If it was closed, the town should have been notified of it, but if it was closed, these guys should have been notified about it, but we still don't know. We still don't know the answer to that question, but we're looking into it. There's some pictures at the end of this, that the outstanding maintenance issues on the site. So they went in and cleaned out the north end of that detention area that had the little gully running through it that wasn't seeded with, well, it was seeded with wetlands mix originally, but whether it got mowed or the stuff didn't grow. They went in, cleaned that whole area out, and seeded it with a wetlands mix. They also added some shrubs around the outside of it. There are placards posted around the outside of it, as well as placards everywhere else. We talked about that last time. So that area has been cleaned up. Erin saw it just after they had done it. Rusty actually went over and saw Erin and said, "Hey, I've done this, do you wanna come look at it?" So she looked at it and noticed some invasive species. I now know what mugwort looks like. I always knew what it was, I just didn't know what its name was. So there was a small area between the existing cattails and the area that he worked on, and he didn't go in and mow that stuff out because he didn't know whether it was good stuff or bad stuff. So they cleaned that stuff out yesterday. It was cleaned out as of yesterday. The other maintenance item was the riprap outfall that goes out to the river had, you know, a bunch of trees that came in and dropped their seeds and started growing in the rock. That stuff was cleaned out as of yesterday. So I believe we've taken care of all of those outstanding issues that came up that had to deal with the 2018 approval. The DEP, and I say they got the letter yesterday, they actually, Jeff told me, they actually got it this morning. I didn't get it till this morning. DEP's final report came in just this morning. It's not a lot more descriptive than the handwritten one that they gave the day they did the inspection, but the final report is there. Fergie is right now preparing a formal response to it and will act on whatever needs to be acted on. There's, I believe there's a couple of questions as to exactly what it is they want to do about a particular item, but the report just came in this morning. When they come up with their formal response letter, we will give you a copy of that letter so that you have what they're going to do about each of the items that's on that report. Erin has the updated stormwater maintenance and management plan. We took the last one and updated it to include this new work, provided a new plan that shows this new work. The plan shows where all of the placard locations are, so that that record is there. If there's anything that, as Erin goes through it and reviews it, that needs to be changed, we'll work with Erin and update that so that you'll have the we'll work with Aaron and, and update that so that you'll have the formal plan as of this project, so that they'll have that on file, and you'll have that on file. Outdoor storage. So as of a few weeks ago, all of the material that was, the, the only temporary outdoor storage material that was left as of a few weeks ago was the stuff that was over on Allegheny's property. I don't know how many pallets it was, but there was, there was some material over there. All of that stuff has shipped, there's no more storage outdoor. The only things stored outdoor right now are empty wooden pallets that are stacked up on the loading dock area. They took the metal containers that were in the parking lot that we've seen pictures of in previous, in previous iterations of this, those are in the loading dock area. So the only outdoor material is going to be the material that gets put in the loading dock as a loading dock typically works. Flatbed trucks will come in with raw material, they'll unload it to the loading dock and the trucks will go away. Ferdy then takes that material and brings it inside the building. After they've done their stuff and made new product, they bring it out to the loading dock, the flatbeds come in and they load it on. So the loading dock was, is what was permitted in 2018, that's the only time the material is outside, is when it's going to be unloaded and brought in or brought out and loaded onto the trucks. It is almost a daily occurrence, but that's the nature of the business.
Doesn't the raw material come in in bulk, dump trailers?
Most of it.
Just for the record, repeat what he said.
For, for the record, plant manager Jeff Duval just said yes. Most of it comes in in bulk trucks, but some of it does come in bagged on pallets.
Okay, so the bulk is unloaded elsewhere, not near the loading dock?
And I think as we said, the, at, at the very first hearing, all of those areas where materials, the, the loading dock area, the place where the bulk trucks unload their material, those all have the DEP spill kits and the signs for DEP spill notifications. The other thing about the temporary storage, and we've been talking about this for a couple of months, as to what the process is going to be moving forward, Ferdy now has decided, they, they still don't have a final resolution for how they're going to do this next year, but they will not be asking for a temporary permit from you to store material within your regulated areas. Covers 90% of the site unfortunately, but that whole, that, basically that whole parking lot on the western side is pretty much within your 50-foot upland review area. They're, they're not going to do that anymore. Probably the biggest reason is, is DEP wants them to put a roof over it. So they've been looking into, they've been talking with Allegheny since this first came up, they're also looking into other options, other locations off-site, other locations that they may store it indoor in a warehouse building. So they're looking at that for next year's cycle of this happening. One of the questions that I believe Aaron brought up in this report was, if you're increasing production, won't you have more material that you need to store outside? And even though we're not going to store it outside on our site, Jeff mentioned this last time, that by, or Frank did, that adding the third line will allow them to make more product when they need it. So if the material ships in March, April and May, that's when people are buying it and ordering and shipping it, they can now make it faster right then when it's needed to get it out the door. Whereas now, they were making all that material in December and January and needed to wait until somebody bought it in March. So it actually is going to help them, which is the whole purpose behind this, this, this project, is that they can make it when it's needed, instead of having to make it and then store it for a long time and have to go through all of that. But they're, they're not going to ask permission to store temporary material outside anymore. So the town engineer also, their, her review was attached to, to this latest report that we got on Friday, and her report basically is favorable for this commission. She gave you additional information that will be required under the planning and zoning commissions purview when we submit to them. And there's a list of three or four or five items that are all technical charts and graphs and information that civil engineers know about. She gave it to you just as a reference, that that information will be required at planning and zoning, and she will review further at that point, because zoning has a lot more detailed regulations than this commission does regarding storm drainage. And then there, there's some of the pictures at the end of what's been done.
Okay, any questions? Carolyn?
No, no, thank you.
Ally?
Not at this time.
Jeff?
No.
Jimmy?
No.
I don't know where to start. I guess the biggest question you, for me, overall, overall umbrella question for you, Tom, is you keep on saying, oh, well that, well, we'll provide that, oh, that, well, we'll change the color of the line, we will do that. Isn't this your la, your last night for this application?
Mm-hmm. So. As, as, from what I understand from our discussion as to the timeline, yes.
So why are you talking about the future? Like you're going to do it later? I'm confused.
Because we got the review on Friday, and on Friday was the deadline for us to submit our package for this meeting, so I submitted our package for this meeting, on the same day we got the review that says the line needs to say URA instead of FSB. Just as an example.
Okay, I did fax it to you Wednesday morning at 10 o'clock. Whether or not you guys got the fax, I did, my, my comments did go out Wednesday to you at 10 o'clock, or to the plant at 10 o'clock. But, but I, I'm still confused. So you say, well, we, we will do this, this, I think there's about 10 things you said you'll do. I'm still confused, we don't, we don't approve things with that many hanging things.
I don't know that there's 10, but changing the color of a line from bright color to dark yellow.
Oh, no.
And adding this impervious chart.
Okay, let, let's be more specific.
The plan, in my mind, would be a condition of approval, and we'll give you a final plan.
All right, we can, we can consider a bunch of conditions of approval with all these little things hanging, I suppose. I guess the biggest thing engineer said, that the town engineer in her comments, which, which went out in your packet, dated June 7th, went out last Friday night, okay. I mean, she goes on and on, she did, she did, finally, she likes the compensatory flood storage area, the changes you made to that, she, she agrees with that, she's good with that. But it's, she talks about pre-treatment, okay? And this commission is interested in pre-treatment because they are interested in water quality. So she points out that there's no pre-treatment and, actually, she says, she quotes the DEP stormwater manual, she says, "Ferdy is considered a land use or activity with potential for higher pollutant loads, therefore, tree, pre-treatment shall be added for stormwater runoff being routed to the proposed basin." And they also, you also need pre-treatment to the, in the catch basin and pre-treatment, she says, "If the proposed roof is flat and metal, then you will also need pre-treatment for the roof." I don't know what your roof is going to be made of. So I, I, pre, pre-treatment, I mean, it's an element, but it, it's not nothing, I mean, you got a design for it, it's, you know, it's, I hope you, I hope you can accommodate that, I, it's a little tricky, pre-treatment's a little tricky that way. So that's one thing that jumped out at me. The other thing's minor, I think, I think why you keep on getting the impervious surface area wrong, I, I kept, just tonight in your presentation, I go, what's, and you handed out, what's, it's for the entire site, it's not just for the jurisdictional area of this commission. So you got to include the square footage of the building and the parking lots and the driveways, not just the narrow areas of the upland review area. So that's why it's, it's, it's not what we're looking for. But that's, that's not the end of the world, I'm just pointing out why the figures never seem to.
Well, look, you seem to have a pile of, of issues, but they're not written down, and we're not going to sit and go through one-on-one. Can they grant us an extension, another extension?
No, the problem is, the extension, they got an extension on May 4th, so the extension ends, I just did the math, we have a 65-day extension, so it ends July 8, and we don't meet until July 27. So what, what are, what are the options? You can approve it tonight with a bunch of conditions.
Well, I, I don't, I'm not going to go through a list of, of conditions of approval to satisfy to submit a plan thereabouts, especially a plan that's going to increase the use of the property that's giving us some potential problems. I mean, the state's got problems, the town engineer's got issues.
Yeah, we got, by the way, I should, most, very importantly, we got copies of the DEP's violation, final violation report, we were waiting, and it was supposed to come out May 26th. Well, we finally got it Monday, June 13th, via email, because we communicate with them with email, so I don't know why you guys had delay in that, maybe they mailed it to you, but anyway, the, I have a copy of it if you want to, if you want to see it. I guess the difference between the notice of violation they were handed, the one-page notice, they were handed the day of the site inspection by the state, and this one, not only is it longer, but it has photographs of the spillage of, of fertilizer in different spots, they photographed it to document it. And, but, but also, not only did they want roof on the storage, outside storage, the state also wants containment, which they don't talk, they don't specify, but what, basically, that's a concrete mow. So, so, but now Tom's saying that they don't want to do outside storage, so they, so that's kind of a change. You know, from the previous practice, they do the seasonal for four or five months a year, they do the outside storage. So I don't know where that is, but a new thing that came up on Monday, and I don't know if you guys have talked to the town planner, but he notified me that in the new regulations that were passed this winter, this site actually has more parking spaces than it needs. So he, he just did a rough calculation, they have something like 60 more parking spaces than they need. So what that means is they got some territory they could, in theory, build outside storage for their fertilizer if, if the planning and zoning commission decides that they would go ahead and approve outside storage for fertilizer, which today is not approved under this zoning. So, so they have more territory to work with, that's all I'm saying. That was like, I didn't know that, I mean, this is brand-new information to me, and I don't know if, if you knew that. So you would have to talk to the town planner about how to.
That, 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 that would be a planning and zoning issue if we wanted to have outdoor storage that required a roof, would be a planning and zoning issue.
Right.
And what I just said tonight is, we are not going to store material temporarily within any regulated area under the, under, under the direction of this commission. We're, we're not going to do it. If we decide to build a shelter in area that this commission doesn't have regulations over, it's a planning and zoning issue.
Well, no, not exactly, because we regulate water quality, so even if you cite the outside storage outside of the 50-foot upland review area, how the, the storage of fertilizer and the maintenance of that fertilizer and, you know, runoff from that fertilizer would be a concern to this commission.
So it's, I'm sorry about this, but it, it's conjecture as to what may possibly happen in the future, and what I just said was, they are actively looking at off-site from this property for storage of temporary material.
I don't think that's the problem I see tonight. I, I understand what you're saying, and that's something to deal with if the time comes. But are, are you ready to accept this as, as application to be voted on? You have a whole list of things you make reference to.
We could, we could.
If they don't, if they don't have what you wanted, then we don't have any choice.
I want to, I, I.
Hang on, let her finish.
I just, the plan, Tom didn't have time to revise the plan from my comments of June 8th on his plan of May 25th. He gave me, sent a plan May 25th, he gave me an advanced copy. He said, hey, take a crack at this, look at this. So I did, to spiff it up, get it into shape, and he just ran out of time on that. So we could approve it with a bunch of conditions of approval.
Do you have the list of conditions? I'm not going to go, I'm not going to go.
No.
Down the list, and oh, by the way, and oh, by the way.
I'm just hearing this tonight, so I, I don't have it prepared, no, but I guess we have to look, maybe it's important to look big picture at this. I will say, they did satisfy their previous permit. We got the basin done this month in May, in the month of May, they got, they, they cleared up that problem with the western basin, they had Rusty Rogers out there, they did plant it, it's got shrubs, it looks good, they just recently, this week took out the mugwort and maintained the riprap soil in the back. So that applicant, that permit's under compliance, except for some illegal storage of fertilizer bags and, you know, which today, I guess, are not, no longer there. So that's good, they cleaned that up. Moving forward, I guess the big thing in my environmental planners report went out in your packet, and as I say in there, one big thing is the issue of storage. At that time, we, we have no alternative at that moment when I was sat down to write this, which was, I guess, Friday, was, you know, we didn't have any information on their plans for outside storage. We still have no concrete plans for storage of fertilizer, although they commit that they're not going to put any on site. I mean, it's not the end of the world that we don't have the right impervious surface figures, that's not, that could be forgiven, I suppose. Monitoring wells, I guess, planning and zoning could take that up, it's not the end of the world. I guess we could go ahead and approve this, this is, or they could withdraw and come back with a new application in July, and, and then it would be heard and the first time they could get it approved would be September, first Wednesday in September, that's another consideration. We don't have pre-treatment, but again, planning and zoning will take that up, or again, if we, if they reapply, we could take that up in July and September.
You got to decide, Aaron.
Mr. Chairman, I would, in just mulling this over, my thoughts would be the following, that you can't assume an application will do something bad in the future, number one. Having done it in the past, okay, they resolved that issue, and I think that was paramount in this application, that you take care of the violations. It appears as though they've been taken care of. The applicant has informed the commission that they have no intentions, in fact, telling you directly, they do not plan to use outside storage, they are looking to do it elsewhere. I accept that, on faith, I, I just simply do. I'm not going to assume you'll just repeat the errors of the past, that may or may not happen, but I, I will not assume you'd do it again. Standing on that, if, if the majority of things had been resolved that were issues in the past, in all fairness, I'd let them continue. If they do something wrong, we'll be on the case.
I don't, I don't think that's quite the issue, really. She's indicating that's not complete. Yes, they've done all those things, yes, they have, there's, and she indicates that there's a state DEP, DEEP issues. The question is, is what she feels satisfied with. She's got to determine either one or two conditions of approval that get her under, under control, because we're not going to sit here and, and say, well, they will, or they won't, or they're going to send, and, and she hasn't got it. they won't, or they're going to send, and, and she hasn't got to tell them. I agree with you, they did, cleaned up their previous, in fact, I think there should be a bond involved to almost every application these days, I hate to say it, because it wasn't, it's not in my nature, but it's the only way for the town to keep track, or the applicant to get his money back, to do the, the punch list at the end of the project. But this, this goes to Erin. I mean, this, this application, you, it was out there for 60 days, 90 days, and then it got a two-week extension, and here we are. This is what's wrong with the, with the program.
I, I have a technical question we haven't talked about yet, Tom, could you address the dumpster, the DEP wants dumpsters and roll-offs to be watertight, is that possible to get something like that watertight?
Good evening, my name is Frank DeRosa, I'm with FERTY Technologies. When you look at what the DEP, and they noted that one of, you know, failed to ensure all dumpsters, compactors, roll-offs are watertight, and have covers provide chemical containment. And then she makes a note, again, to number eight, material of fertilizer bags require cover roof, so she noted it under that item eight, but it's only referring to the fact that we need to have a roof and cover, cover over fertilizer material, it is not relative to, to a roll, to dumpsters. Our dumpsters are covered, our dumpsters meet the requirements that were set in the original plan.
I don't think the issue is a dumpster problem here. It doesn't fit to the, what I'm hearing over here.
There was like two or three containers-
But it doesn't, it doesn't fit the application tonight, because they're, they're not going to be using dumpsters, you going to be using dumpsters going forward? Are they there on the site all the time?
The dumpsters are trash dumpsters, they're always dumpsters that are there for dry materials, yes.
What, are those three big metal containers that were parked right next to the western storm basin, are they going to stay there, are they still there?
The met, the metal containers are temporary storage containers that are now up on the loading dock area, where we are permitted, according to the meeting that we had on May 13th, to, to place those for outside storage, and that was per the meeting we had with the town planner, Kevin, I believe his name is.
This gets worse. What dumpsters, hang on a minute, what dumpsters are you talking about? Are you two talking about the same dumpsters?
No, there's a big trash dumpster, I'm not, I'm personally not concerned with that one. No, there's these blue metal containers.
Those are storage containers, 20-foot storage containers that we lease, that we store materials in, and those are sitting-
Closed door, I mean, they're solid, they're-
Closed doors, watertight, yes.
Okay, so I asked, could they be watertight, and your answer is, yes, they are watertight.
But they're not dumpsters, and that's where I think we have to-
They're roll-off, they're sealand containers, if they want to call them.
The, as far as storing fertilizers on the loading dock, okay, I've taken pictures of this. The issue is, I don't know if this commission wants dump, fertilizer bags stored 10 feet from a catch basin, a yard drain, that goes into the, into the storm basin. When I think of a loading dock, I think of active, on-off, on-off, I don't know, maybe it sits there for a few days, but they, these were there for a long, for months, right by the catch basin.
How does that affect the application tonight? Those could be gone tomorrow morning, they could be gone right now.
I don't know, I think I just heard, that's why I'm asking, I think I just heard Tom say they want to keep storing things on the loading dock. Not by the door, of course you want to store it by the door, of course, no, but on the far side by the basin.
If I may respond, so there was temporary fertilizer, there was fertilizer stored outside, which has been addressed, and there was fertilizer that was stored on that loading dock as part of the outside storage, that was, where we were giving a, a verbal approval by planning and zoning back in September of 1920, or 1920, I'm sorry, of 2000, yeah, of 2020. And I received that approval, all right, because I was the one that asked for it. So we, in good faith, were storing material out there, unbeknownst to the fact that there was the 50-foot setback that had to be, all we were told was that we could use up to 60 parking spaces and stay out of the flood zone. So in good faith, that's what we did. Now, of course, this has all changed, so yes, there was fertilizer that was stored there, but what Tom was referring to is the fact that that's an active loading area, truck comes in, the truck, it's a flatbed truck typically, it's offloaded, moved into storage, a truck comes in to get loaded, the material comes out of the warehouse, and it's put on the truck. But we, if you would go there now, and I drove through there right before this meeting, there is not material that is being stored on there, the only thing that's on there are those C containers, and I believe some empty pallets. Is that correct, Erin?
So, if you want to approve this tonight, Mr. Chairman, as, it's on page five of my environmental planners' report, my report dated, hold on, dated June 8, I say, should the commission wish to proceed with an approval of this revised application, then, the conditions of approval suggested would be to submit all outstanding information, omissions-
Wait, wait a minute, wait a minute, this, this is the paragraph considerations relative to possible action?
Yes, yes.
Okay, because you've got a couple paragraphs here.
Yes, I'm sorry, it's number two under there.
Number two, what about number one?
Well, that's, it says, the town engineer is happy with their compensatory flood storage area, and then it says, there's a bunch of things missing from the design for the new basin, which she will exact under the planning and zoning review. So, that's okay, we can approve as a condition of approval that any changes to this basin under the planning and zoning review process have to be made on our final, on the wetland final plan set to be submitted to us within two months' time, or something like that. Because the pre-treatment is the key thing for me, of all the things she mentioned, the pre-treatment is, is, stands out. So, anyway, so, but that's okay, they'll have a, you're going before planning and zoning, do you have a date yet with that?
Nope.
Did you apply to planning and zoning?
No, no.
Erin, where, where are we on that paragraph? Are we, item two?
I was, I was on the second arrow under item one, where I talk about the town engineer lack of pre-treatment for flows. Okay, now, moving on to number two, I talk about, hey, if you want to go ahead and approve this, this is what I'd like you to, we could do this, if they submit outstanding information, clarification, whatever, which I know Tom is aware of, and he's willing to do that, we could do it as a condition of approval. These are minor things, wrong call-outs, and things like that, no, no big deal.
Okay, I, I've lost you again, Erin, I'm sorry.
Okay.
You've got the number one, the town engineer will review new and revised submittals, prior to the meeting, now that is rescheduled for later in June, that was this meeting. Okay, right? Am I on the same?
No, maybe you're on your dip, I've written so many reports on this project.
Well, that's the problem, here's, here's-
That's not the one.
May 26.
Yeah, 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 this is June 8.
Thank you.
No problem.
No wonder I was having a little trouble here. Thought I was going.
Sorry about that.
Well, now, we got to it, okay, possible action, all right, so, number one, you're, you're satisfied that that's been taking, under control, taken care of?
No, actually, let's go to number two, I'd like to talk about number two. Number two, we can go ahead with approval, with the conditions of approval being, and that I have bullets, they, under here, that they submit extraneous, all this detailed information that was, that Tom went through tonight, they, they just got it wrong a little bit, but they can fix that, impervious surface area and this kind of thing, that's easy to fix. So as a condition of approval, it would say, the final, that within two months, within a month's time, they submit a revised plan that gets all this information contained in this report correct, with the lines and the call-outs and all that, the impervious service figures, okay? That'd be number one. Then I talk about mugwort, forget it, they did the mugwort, so they're good with the mugwort, we don't have to worry about that. Then the last one on this page would be erosion controls, it's a typical one, we have it on all applications, erosion controls to be installed, meeting the satisfaction of the environmental planner prior to commencement with further work, that's on all projects. And I would add another one here, so there'll be three, the one I'm adding is that any changes made at planning and zoning regarding this stormwater or basins, the two basins or stormwater, or design of the basins, they got to come back and give us a revised plan to reflect the changes to those basins, such as, what we're talking about is pre-treatment, is the number one thing.
Okay, and number three?
So that was number three.
That was number three, the DEP report?
Well, now, if you want to add another condition of approval, that they submit to us what Tom said they would, he said they'd gladly submit us a copy of their response to the DEP notice of violation report, that, do we have a date on this report?
If, if I may comment on that report, the items that were noticed, were noted as violation, other than the covering of outside storage, have all been taken care of. So there was a broken bag of fertilizer that was cleaned up, there was some fertilizer from our bulk unloading, there was some lines that had spilled, and that was cleaned up, I mean, it was just a matter of taking a broom and a shovel, it's, I mean, it just really, stated very simply. The stormwater monitoring that was handled for us by HRP, the environmental consultant, was missed, we can't go back here and do that, but we're on track now to make sure that every other, every stormwater before that has been taken care of monitoring, and everyone after that, and then the visual observations have been, are being noted as well, they were, and there was, there was a couple that were missed, I, I believe, you know, so, we've taken care of it, and we, we're going to respond, and we will respond to you in regards to that as well, but the violations were, you know, they, they were more housekeeping, and they, they really weren't egregious violations.
Well, that's usually all the violations are housekeeping.
Yeah.
It's all associated with housekeeping, it just goes on. But, the DEEP will probably send us a copy of their final report also.
Okay.
So, it'll be quite, so this DEP is, issue is not in this condition of approval, you have a different, number three?
I'll go through them again, there's four, and the last one I'd like is, that a copy of their response to the DEP notice that I received on June 13th, the final report, it's their final violation report from DEP, based on a April 26 site visit, this is their final report in my hand, we got it Monday, that their response to it be submitted to the environmental planner, otherwise we'll never know what they're saying to the state, and how they're responding to them. So, that was condition number four.
And, and just one other comment on that, though, I don't believe, Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, that we are required to respond to the DEP?
Correct. So what they told me to do was do a, basically, Jeff DuVal, plant manager of FERTY, what they asked me to do was respond to the initial violation sheet that, that they had sent, so I actually emailed the inspector back immediately with our corrective actions, but she did not ask for a, any kind of response once I received the final.
You all set, Erin?
I, I'm sorry, I was reading this, could you repeat that, please? I was reading the DEP report.
Yes, so she gave us the initial violation sheet, the day of the inspection.
Yes.
She noted the violations on the inspection, and asked that I had sent her an email with an update on corrective actions for all those, I did that. She did not ask for another response after I received the final.
Be more than happy to share-
Right, I can do another one.
The initial, the response that we sent to the DEP with-
I did a PowerPoint, I did a PowerPoint presentation that I sent her, showing before-and-after pictures of all spills.
Okay, all right.
Everything was taken care of.
I'm going to be here long after you guys go home, so. Are you, are you all set now?
No, actually, I'm sorry, I know we're all want to go home, but-
Then, 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 let's cancel the meeting, and you're cancel the, withdraw the application. If we're going to continue this all night, this should have been done long before tonight.
I just want to point out that the state is now requiring annual monitoring of E coli, and I don't even know why, but she says that because of, because-
No, that was, yes, that was a condition she said that they're doing across the board, it was not just for us.
Oh, okay, all right.
That's the thing they're implementing.
Okay, that clarifies it, because I'm saying, why would you-
And it's already been discussed with HRP, and they are adding it into their testing.
Okay, so, I think we can do this with four conditions of approval, would you like me to-
I got it.
To read them?
You, have Ally read them and see if you agree.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that this application- where am I? A-22 dash 3.2, 155 East Street, FERTY Management, be approved with the following conditions, submittal of all outstanding information, clarifications in the above-listed pages one and two, and within a month's time, that erosion controls be installed, meeting the satisfaction of the environmental planner prior to commencement of any outdoor, or sorry, any further onsite work, that any changes made in planning and zoning come back to inland-wetland with the revised plan, and submit a copy of their response to DEP's notice of violation dated June 13th to be submitted to the environmental planner.
Okay, my changes to your motion, it's, it's not dated June 13th, I received it June 13th, they actually don't have a date on this report. The, the, you could call it the DEP's final-
Revised my motion to omit the presumed date of the notice of violation.
And, the other thing is, if you could just add, when you said on pages two and three, I would say, on pages two and three of the environmental planners' report dated June 8.
All right, do I have to start at the top and go through the whole thing again?
No, I don't.
Okay.
Before, wait a minute, before I go, because we go through, Jimmy, any comments?
No.
On that, Jeff?
No.
No.
Okay, I mean, we'll be time after the motion, but, okay, but first of all, let's hold up, you got to hold. All right, we're ready to act on this application, Erin, correct?
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion regarding the significant activity of this application.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that this, that application, A-22 dash 3.2, 155 East Street, FERTY Management, be deemed a significant activity? Not a significant activity.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and second, any discussion? Call for a vote, Jimmy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Caroline?
Yes.
Ally?
Yes.
Yes. Now I'll entertain a motion to approve or deny this application, wait a minute.
Now I've got to go through these things again.
There's got to be a bond in here. Put a $5,000 bond in.
Now I start at the top. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve application A-22 dash 3.2, 155 East Street, FERTY Management, with the following conditions, submittal of all outstanding information, clarifications and omissions requested in the environmental planners' report dated June 8th, on pages two and three, with emotion controls to be installed, meeting the satisfaction of the environmental planner prior to commencement of any further work on site, that any changes made in planning and zoning come back to the inland-wetland water course commission with a revised plan, to submit a copy of the response to DEP's notice of violation to be submitted to the environmental planner, and a bond be held in the amount of $5,000.
Five, you said $5,000?
$5,000.
Motion made, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Call for a vote, Caroline?
Yes.
Ally?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Jimmy?
Yes.
Yes. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you all. All right.
Is this ready to be asked?
Yes.
All right, application A-16 4.3, 103 North Turnpike Bond Release, ready or not?
Uh, no.
Okay. A-22 4.1, 14 Research Parkway, GKN Aerospace.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. For the record, Brian Baker with Civil One, licensed engineer in the state of Connecticut. I'm also a certified professional in erosion and sediment control and in stormwater quality. With me is Ian Cole, our wetlands scientist, and I also have Keith Gier from GKN Aerospace, the applicant. I'll go over the application with you. We submitted this back in April, and we've had a couple of reviews with Erin that we've cleaned up, but you have not seen this before the commission yet, so I want to go over what the overall proposal is. So GKN Aerospace is at 14 Research Parkway, so that's on the corner of, excuse me, Research Parkway, of course it died on me, sorry, Research Parkway and Carpenter Road. There's also the cul-de-sac of Laser Lane is at the northwest corner of the property. This is the existing condition survey we had completed. They've got existing, existing 70,000 square foot R&amp;D facility for aerospace. There's a driveway off of Carpenter and off of Research. There's parking in front of the building and then loading dock on the north side. The one wetland area we had, or natural wetland area is a wooded wetland in the northeast corner that was flagged by Ian. We also have an existing detention basin and water quality basin in the nor, excuse me, the southeastern portion of the property that treats all the drainage currently. We are in the watershed protection area, so the existing system has an oil grit separator and a sand filter and then a large wet bottom basin. They have not been maintained in a number of years, so part of this program is going to be to, and I'll go over it, to upgrade that sand filter area and expand the detention basin. What's happening is they're having a change of programming at GKN. They've got a facility in Cromwell and one here in Wallingford, and they're basically swapping the uses there, so they're going to have a lot more employees here at the site, so we need to create more parking for them. So that's the proposal here, and I'll show you on the site plan. So this is sheet C 2.1 of your plan set. You can see everything that I showed you on the survey is basically that bottom half of the site is what's already there, the two double-loaded parking areas up above and the connection out to Laser Lane. Those are the new parking areas that we're proposing. It's going to increase the parking from 66 spaces, add another 118 for a total of 184 spaces, which is what they're going to need for the new volume of employees they're going to have at the site. There is no activity within the 50-foot regulated area of that wooded wetland area. Our regulated activities have to deal with the amount of overall impervious surface that we have on the site, as well as activities associated with expanding the detention basin, because now we have more parking, we need to expand the treatment, expand the detention basin, which we've done. And the stormwater treatment, in our case, we do have a significant pre-treatment train that we're using, so basically that upper parking area is going to go into a series of rain gardens and infiltration swales up at the top. Anything that overflows will end up in a new oil grit separator, and those are requirements of the water department, the oil grit separator, and a new reconstructed sand filter at the northern end of the basin. So that will all be pretreatment prior to discharge into the existing wet bottom basin. And that, basically, that eastern side of the basin is what is getting expanded for us to get the additional volume needed to make sure we don't have any increase in stormwater flows. We have had reviews by the water department's engineer, Eric Kruger. We responded to his concerns. He has a couple other questions about velocities in the pipes going in and out of the stormwater chamber, but he indicated that those could be considered conditions of approval, and we will have to go to planning and zoning for a site plan modification, which were on their agenda for their July meeting. As far as the last couple of items that were outstanding, and Erin's memo was the, I just handed her an updated stormwater management plan and report, a couple of labeling items that we went through as far as calling out the different areas of the detention basin. You know, the eastern berm is the area that will be mowed and maintained permanently. The large wet wooded area in the middle is going to remain as a wooded wetland in the existing basin. We have a minor modification to the erosion and sediment control plan that she'd like to see. We're going to wrap the core log and silt fence out around a temporary sediment structure that we're putting in the existing outlet structure. We provided with an updated breakdown of the regulated activities as far as square footage in the different areas that's been provided. And then there was a couple of updates to Ian Cole's wetlands report that she was looking for. We faxed it over, and he's got additional copies tonight, and Ian, you could go over, you know, basically your report and your findings on the site.
Sure.
Briefly.
Again, for the record, Ian Cole, professional soil scientist. Am I on? Am I on now?
You've got a great voice, but we're not hearing it through the microphone.
Are we live?
There we go.
Good evening, for the record, Ian Cole, professional soil scientist, professional wetland scientist. I was retained to delineate the inland wetlands and water courses on the nine-acre property. I don't think the commission's had a chance to ever drive by here, kind of typical of the industrial park, flat landscape. Half the site, the northern half of the site is wooded. Back in the 90s when they originally developed the site, three-quarters of the site was originally cleared. This, this upper area where the parking lots proposed is already predisturbed from when they created the original building envelope. This wooded section in the northeast corner that's remaining untouched, that's kind of the, the natural area that's kind of never been, been touched when this area was originally developed. And as Brian had pointed out, the other two regulated resource features are these man-made water quality basins. This is a wet basin, basically it's a fragmity stand, left, you know, unmanaged throughout the years, and so around the perimeter we've gotten some willows and alders and things like that, so it's, it's kind of naturalized a little bit. And then this outlet swale right here, it's really, if you kind of get through the thick brush, it's a riprap line, you know, stone check damn swale, that's just kind of the outlet for this system. As Brian had said, you know, the standard ENS controls, BMPs in conformance to permit conditions, you know, this, this would not be a significant activity. It's kind of a closed system, everything's being kept on site, so.
Is it functioning?
The, the wetlands functioning in terms of like water quality?
Well, water quality, retention ponds, any erosion?
Uh, no signs of erosion that I personally saw. I mean, I'd guess I would defer to Brian if it's operating efficiently from a.
No, there's, no signs of erosion. It's, it's operating functionally for, from the detention standpoint. The sand filter is in need of repair or remediation. That hasn't been maintained, and there's some trees growing up in it. It has to be, because of the new parking area, it has to be expanded anyway, so we're just, we're going to rebuild it.
All right. All right, let's, are you all set at the moment?
Yeah.
Questions, Jimmy?
Really not at this time.
Okay, Jeff?
No questions.
Caroline?
No, thank you.
Allie?
None.
Erin?
Um, has the commission heard enough about the description of the proposal before I launch into things?
I think they've made their presentation.
Okay. I, I was reading something, did you talk, Brian, about the rain gardens? Did you talk about them?
Yeah, yep. So that's the first measure of the treatment train. I mentioned the rain gardens and infiltration trench up at the top of the system, yeah.
And to make sure you use the microphone.
Okay, so my environmental planners' report went out June 8th. I had another one that went out earlier, April 29th, which gives more information and has the pictures, rather startling pictures of the unmaintained stormwater facilities. And I still don't know how this, this happens in the watershed, you know. They do have watershed inspectors, so I don't know how this, how this happens. We have another, later in the evening, there's another one that was neglected as well. Okay, so the, the engineer worked, the project engineer and project soil scientists worked with me with my idea. My idea was, do we really want to, they want, originally they were going to ream out that basin where you have an alder, a shrub alder habitat there, and, you know, it's, it was alarming, especially with the birds flying around nesting and so on. It was make, quite an impression on me, and they worked with me and designed a way to kind of have, have both, have your cake and eat it too. So they're expanding the basin on the east side while leaving the habitat of the basin as it is, 75% of it will be left as it is. So it kind of have your cake and eat it too. Anyway, the, the proof will be in the pudding, it's kind of tricky doing the excavation, taking out the old sand filter, putting in the new sand filter, and expanding the basin on the, on the east without making a mess. So that'll be the trick. They've designed this erosion control plan, looks good on paper, but of course, you've got to see how it really, really acts, and it's got to be monitored very carefully by the site, the site workers there. So, that said, I guess, you know, the one thing, I have conditions of approval, if you want to go ahead and approve it, and they are written on the last page, page five of my environmental planners' report. I guess the one downside with it, it is an increase in surface area because of this very large parking lot they're putting in, and a smaller little parking lot they're putting in. So I guess it's an increase of, is this right, Brian, 48, roughly 48,000 square feet?
That's correct.
Okay. So that's over an acre. So that's a lot, and then, you know, usually we get it offset by infiltration and so on. But I guess there's, this site is not going to be providing infiltration for various reasons, but what it is going to provide is the rain gardens, which, as the engineer explained to me, the two proposed rain gardens and the long infiltration trench to be located in the new parking area will provide infiltration of the first flush, which is that about, approximately the first inch of rain. So that's good, and the drainage patterns haven't been altered with this design plan, so that's good. The existing roof floors enter the basin directly today, but we're not being asked to expand the building or anything, so we can't really ask them to change that. So that's kind of the downside of this project, that it can't kind of offset too much that increase in impervious area. But what are you going to do? On new sites, you really can work with that and get what you want, get more of what we want. This is an old site, so we're kind of stuck with some limitations, site constraints.
I think the regulation that talks about increasing impervious surface to existing sites is to protect the sites and keep them the way they were and possibly some improvement. It's not reinventing the wheel on them, so it's, that's kind of the reason. Are you in agreement with all the conditions of approval that she recommended?
I am.
Okay.
I will say, number two, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, number two, Brian tonight handed in, right? So we don't have to worry about number two?
Correct. Number two I handed in, and number one I was faxed yesterday, the updated numbers.
Yeah. He provided me the missing impact figures.
So whether we provide it to you yesterday or tomorrow, it's, you can approve the whole package. Jimmy?
Just a thought, and it's really not in any way suggesting that it has to be done. One thing that I, I would love to see people start looking into for their water controls on a parking lot, instead of using all these raised beds that have a difficult time getting water into them, if they were below the surface, separated with curbing around them to allow the water of a parking facility of that size to go into swales at each of those island areas, rather than have them up, have them just down a little bit and take that sheet flow and let it go into them and convey it to where you want it to go.
So I, obviously I didn't explain our proposal good enough, because what you're asking for is what, is actually what we're doing up on that upper parking area. So both of the, the northern, the north is up on this map, that northern parking area drains to the south into that open green area, that swale and rain garden, and the southern double parking area also drains to the north, so. So these will all drain into this rain garden infiltration area, so there's no, there's no curbing, there's no curbing on the inside of that.
Wonderful.
So that's, that's where they're designed. We can't do, we're not going to redo it or can't redo it for the, you know, 60 existing spaces we have, but all the new ones, there's no curbing on them, and they grate into vegetated areas.
Wonderful. I think that's a great idea.
Jeff?
No questions.
Allie?
So just to be clear, the, it's the, Mr. Kruger's conditions in his report dated June 9 were met?
No, no, there, I have them on, they're condition number four on page five.
Okay.
Yeah. Which is now going to be condition number two, because we've eliminated the first two, one and two, we already satisfied tonight. Actually, there is one other thing that, this goes to Ian. Ian, you sent me, this week you sent me a revised wetland report.
Correct.
Except you sent it by fax, so the picture is blacked out, that you drew of the wetland line in the bottom where the alder thicket is.
No, none of the graphics changed whatsoever, just, just the text, the italics text.
Use the microphone, you've got to get into.
Okay, then, then why don't you, I, okay, so explain to me, in that alder thicket area, is it, does, are there wetlands or is it all standing water? Is it classified as wetlands?
Yes, it would meet the definition of a wetland because technically it has wetland soil underneath it because it's aquic soil, so it has an aquic moisture regime.
Okay.
If you read the definition of a wetland, it talks about poorly drained or other areas that have been, you know, cut, filled, drained, excavated, and also posed in an aquic.
Okay, so maybe as another condition of approval, you hand me a sketch, could be hand drawn, just to say that that is a wetland, because right now it doesn't say that, correct? If I look on a map, it does, the map does not show it as a wetland, is that right?
I, I don't make the site plan, the engineer does.
No, it's, it's the, it's just called water quali, or.
Water quality basin. My, my, it is a site sketch for navigation purposes, so that the land surveyors can go out and locate the flags.
Okay, but.
My graphic is a sketch.
Your words say it's a wetland, and there's nothing to, that's on a plan that says it's a wetland, that's.
In, in the report, it refers to that, the, the outlet control there, that elevation, that is the elevation, because it's an engineered structure. So it's, it's the outlet elevation that is the limiting jurisdictional line.
So his new report does state that that, the large water quality basin is a wetland?
Would you like me to read it into the record for you?
No, I, I, well, you could, for the benefit of the commission. I read it, I just need a line, we usually get a line, like a rim around the edge that's a wetland, or the whole thing is aquint on a map of some variety. You did it for the other wetlands on the site.
So she wants the actual wetland line delineated? We can do that.
We can absolutely do that.
We can add that.
Absolutely, not a problem at all.
Okay, all right. You all set, Allie?
So can.
You got any more questions?
I don't have any more questions.
Carol?
None, thank you.
None, thank you.
All right. Okay. Then if we're going to act upon this tonight, I need a motion regarding significant activity?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that application A-22-4.1, 14 Research Parkway, GKN Aerospace Services and Structures, Services Structures, be deemed not a significant activity.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, any discussion? Call for vote. Caroline?
Yes.
Allie?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Okay, now entertain a motion to approve or deny this application.
All right, so can I refer to the environmental planners' report, page five, numbers three through seven?
Yes.
Or do I have to read them all off?
No, just refer to...
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to pass, approve, application A-22-4.1, 14 Research Parkway, GKN Aerospace, with the following conditions noted on page five of the environmental planners' report dated June 8th, numbers three through seven.
And a bond of equal to?
And a bond...
Ten thousand.
And including a bond of ten thousand dollars.
Clarification? So the bond is number eight?
Yes.
There's, wait, wait, no, that's not right. Are we renumbering these?
No.
Oh, okay. So the bond would be number eight, and can I add number nine, is the wetland line, or line depicting wetlands in the basin, or something like that, what we just discussed, be shown on the plan?
Conditions of approval will include a...
Submittal, submittal...
Submittal of a new diagram showing the wetlands lines. Yes?
How's that? Submittal of wetlands information around, on a map, whatever, of the basin.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made, seconded, any discussion? Jimmy? No discussion? Vote for the motion?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Entertain a motion. I'll call for a vote. Jim?
Yes.
Yes.
Allie?
Yes.
Carol? Yes, okay.
Thank you.
Very good. I think she probably had this in for, whatever.
Yeah.
Okay, application A-22-4.2, 25 Kandraki Lane.
Hi, how are you?
Good. You have a project in your backyard?
Yes, sir. Jonathan and Carrie Burr, 25 Kandraki Lane. First, to start out, Mr. Chairman, the two visual aids that we just turned in, one was asked for by Ms. O'Hare on Monday, just giving a simple depiction of our property, kind of like putting into scale what we want to do. The attachment E is from Southwest Conservation District. It is a report that we just received on Friday night from a second visit from when they came out in, on this past spring, so in April. So apologies for that being late. What we would like to do is, due to the stream running, the length of the backyard is causing some severe erosion to our property. We've been on the premises roughly eight years. After the first year, we had Southwest come out and take a look at the property, just to kind of gauge where we were at back when we moved in. Moving forward to 2022, the erosion is starting to, starting to increase, as well as undermine two large trees on the property that are pretty much in direct, if they fell, they would impact the house and pretty much take out the house. So what we're looking to do is stabilize four portions of the stream, as well as take down two trees. We're going to do it in two phases. The first one's going to be the tree removal, and that will utilize a crane to come in to the backyard of the property, will not enter the wetlands, but will be within the fifty, fifty feet of the wetlands. And it will be parked ten feet from the creek. They will cut each piece of the tree, remove it without touching the wetlands, it'll be attached to the crane, boomed over, and taken off the premises by one of their trucks. So that's the first phase kind of of the issue. The stump will be left, the root ball will be left, and we will utilize erosion controls such as mats for the crane provided by the company, and hay bales, and silt fence while the tree works being done. Would you like to hear any other details on that, Mr. Chairman?
Continue.
Okay. The second portion involves the stream stabilization slash erosion control of the four different areas. I apologize for the handwritten item, but it was kind of a last minute error on my part for talking about it. The first portion that we want to do is the erosion control blanket riprap, approximately fifty feet, labeled number one on the visual depiction of the property, that's highlighted in the yellow. So once the red maple is down, we have a contractor that will come in and, based off the suggestions we got from Ms. O'Hare, Southwest Conservation District, and just other ideas that we got from the contractor, we're looking to grade it at a two to one slope, remove all any extra excess material, and then provide erosion control blankets, and then riprap on top of it, for that to be stabilized for that. That's kind of the most impacted area, I would say, on the property as far as coming towards our residents. That's the piece that kind of really comes in and continues to erode at, I wouldn't say an alarming rate, but it's starting to get pretty bad, as far as where it's going. We've had to move our fence back twice since we've moved in. Any questions so far?
Mr. Chairman, I failed to hand this out. I just did. They, I met with the owners on Monday, I think, and I've, tonight I should have handed this out.
Oh, apologies.
What you handed in to me on Monday.
Yeah.
I just handed it out tonight, and that's what Mr. Carr has been going over and over tonight.
That's fine. I apologize for that. So further details for each phase are in, are in that revised unified plan that we had there at the suggestion of the town. Number two, in lieu of riprap and not making our backyard look like an industrial complex, we're going to utilize, or request to utilize core logs and vegetation for that area, also done by a contractor that is labeled number two, and that's also approximately fifty feet of the property line. It's a fallen bank in that area, however, the energy doesn't quite, in accordance with the Southwest Conservation District, it's not, they don't feel it's necessary to hard armor it at this point, but try a different approach for the benefit of the environment and obviously, and for us as well. Moving on to number three, if you're satisfied with that explanation?
Yes.
Okay. Erosion control, a different approach again, at the suggestion of the town in Southwest, erosion control blanket and vegetation, approximately twenty feet. That will be done by myself and Mrs. Burr. We will, we will take that project on ourselves. It's something that Chris from Southwest said that we could do, we could easily do ourselves with his guidance. He'll take our phone calls, and he gives a list of shrub plants, other things to use in addition to the environmental, the biodegradable environmental control blanket to not include netting, so that we don't take any wildlife out on that. And then, moving on to number four, if you're pleased with that explanation, the large, where the large tulip tree that we want to take down, which was part of the first thing, that area runs into the back second half of our property, outside of our backyard, into the back where all the wetlands is. So Southwest, impressed upon as how important was not to put any machinery back there, which I get, especially after this hearing is very educational. Now, the issue with that is, that's where, that's where the stream jumps, so that's where it's naturally going to, that's where it's trying to, trying to go. So we had an option, he either said, you know, hard armor it, or, you know, essentially, it was suggested that maybe just let it, let nature take its course for that. So we didn't really have a immediate action plan for that area, just because of the low impact on the other portion of our property, and it's just kind of doing what it does there. And in short, that is our plan. If you have any questions, please fire away.
Caroline, any questions?
No, thank you.
Allie?
No.
Jeff?
No.
Jimmy?
Did you just in the last part there say you're trying to stop the meander from cutting off, or?
No, what we were saying is, at first, it was one of those things that we thought maybe we should stop it, but Chris from the environmental agency said, kind of suggested that if we take the tree down, if we wanted to stop it, we immediately reinforce it with riprap in there. However, there's no, there's no real easy access way for any equipment to get back there, hence why we have the crane, the giant crane coming in to take the, take the tree out. So when we were going back and forth, we're like, well, why not? If nature's going to take its course, why not just let it take its course in that area? It's not like it's going to hurt, it's not going to hurt anything, as far as, I guess, being selfish, property damage, if you will, like towards our property, besides the other side, which is wetlands anyway, which we don't, you know, it's nice for privacy, it's beautiful, we have a lot of, a lot of different nature animals, birds, all that kind of stuff, it's great for that, but other than that, it's not, it's not a functional portion of our property for us personally. For the environment, yes, but not for us.
Yeah, I see this having very little velocity. It's not moving fast at all, is it, this water?
It, okay, so in a, on a normal day, no. As soon as we get one rainstorm, and over the years significantly, it has increased the flow, to the point where we have a small footbridge that's been there prior to us even moving in, but it's, it's up, and I'll tell you what, our neighbors have lived there for thirty years, and they'd never seen the water come up and over the bridges, nor into our backyard. So it's getting worse and worse, and every time this happens, the summer's not the bad month for it. It's obviously, you know, the thaw, the spring, and it's, it's, it's taking out quite a bit, but normally, no, it's nice and peaceful. I mean, it's not, it's nothing that bad.
Typical of meandering streams like that, it's usually very, very low energy for the majority of the time, but then when you get the big flows you just described, it takes that little ox bone, cuts right across it, then you get a little lake on the other side. It's very, it's stream morphology. Interesting.
Erin, comments?
I've worked with the owners for the last few months on this, and it's, it's been an evolution of their understanding the different options and the costs involved. They got several quotes, and then they had to, they had a, the district, five years ago, they had a report, and then the one now, the one they got recently, and they had to wait for that report, because he's very busy, the district's very busy right now, as you can imagine. So, we met on Monday, we consolidated, we came up with a consolidated plan that they want to go with, which is essentially this, right? So I suggest approval. Let's see, do we want to add placards? I guess we usually don't on homeowners' property like this.
There's not really much to it. I mean, you're in, you're working in the brook, which a lot of people think the brook is a water course, but the wetlands isn't the brook. The brook isn't the wetlands, it's the water course, so it's a little different, sorry. I don't see much, if you're, if you're accepting this being drawn by Conservation District or work with, I don't know what suggestion would be to improve on it. I think you've worked out all the details to it.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to thank Ms. O'Hare as well for working with us. We've had, you know, like multiple meetings. I know, I think she was frustrated with us just because we have no idea, like what we're doing. But I appreciate the town, I appreciate you guys, and thanks for doing what you do.
Okay. All right. It is an application, correct, Erin? It's an application?
Yes.
So we'll have to, I'll entertain a motion regarding significant activity.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion regarding application A-22-4.2/25 Kandraki Lane, Carrie and Jonathan Burr, be deemed not significant activity.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made, seconded, any discussion? I will say one thing, that, it's, the significance of this activity is protecting your property from further erosion. That's why I don't think it's a significant wetland, negative, it's not a negative impact to the wetlands. So I'll call for a vote, regarding not a significant activity. Caroline?
Yes.
Allie?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Jimmy?
Yes.
Yes. Now I'll entertain a motion to approve or deny this application.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve application A-22-4.2, 25 Kandraki Lane, Carrie and Jonathan Burr.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made, seconded, any discussion? Off for a vote. Jimmy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Allie?
Yes.
Caroline?
Yes.
Yes. I will throw one item out for you, though, they have bags, if you wanted to load riprap in these cloth bags, the crane could send them on that side if he's going to take the tree down. Just a thought. I happen to have some, if you need some, but you can get hold of me through Erin. But if you choose to put arm recording over, the crane may be able to set the bags over there. Thank you. Okay. All right, very good. All right. Okay, the application A-22-4.3, 12 Mansion Road. What's the story, Erin? 12 Mansion Road.
Okay. We didn't, last month, we didn't approve that. We, the application, we declared not a significant activity, but then it was never voted on because we got distracted then on, into the violation aspect. Anyway, I did go out there afterwards and explained, because she wanted me to explain to her exactly what I needed, to get it spiffed up, and unfortunately, Monday she called and said it hasn't been done yet, because they had other issues to deal with. But she knows she has to attend to that. So I suggest not approving the improvements until...
Not doing anything with...
Until July 27 meeting.
Okay. Tabled. A-22-5.2, 155 John Street, Town of Wallingford.
Neil Anwick, General Manager for the Town of Wallingford Water and Sewer Divisions. I'm here tonight for a fill activity down at the wastewater treatment plant located at 155 John Street. As the commission may be aware, we are in the midst of a $60 million upgrade at the wastewater treatment plant. We are thirty-four months into that, and we have sixty-seven days left, not like staff is counting. It's been a long three years, and a busy three years. So what we find ourselves with, some additional soil, specifically when we removed the road subbase and base material, we ended up with some additional soil that we needed to dispose of. What we are looking to do is to move that soil into what we call Lagoon Number Six. So this is a historical wastewater sludge lagoon. So it is within the fifty-foot inland upland review area. And what I passed out was an aerial photograph from 1974, and I think it really highlights what the Wallingford Sewer Division is proposing to do. We are basically proposing, or we are proposing, to use the limits of the existing historical wastewater sludge lagoon as the basis, and then put the additional excavated soil into that. You can see the yellow contour lines are the proposed grading. The blue line is the wetland. And then I will point out, we are outside the wetland, and we are outside the one hundred... And then I will point out, we are outside the wetland and we are outside the 100-year floodplain elevation. When we are done, we will be using a geotechnical fabric. It will have four inches of loom and then we will use a meadow mix to seed it. It is the same application and the same finishing that this commission previously approved in July of 2020 for what we call our north soil stockpile areas and our south soil stockpile areas. And you can see on the, on the 1974 aerial photograph, to the right of the yellow contour lines is the fill area that was approved in 2020 in Lagoon Number Five.
Okay, all right. You've got, you talk about this as fill sludge number six, which is number six on my map?
The one all the way to the left closest to the Quinnipiac River.
Where the yellow lines are?
Yes, so.
So you're, you're within the 50 feet.
Correct, we are.
Wetland.
Yes, we are.
But you're outside of the 100 feet of the, of the river?
No, we are outside the 100-year flood elevation.
Oh, 100-year flood elevation. And what's in there now?
It is basically scrub. There's a couple large trees that have just grown in there. It is basically, nature has overtaken it when they abandoned the sludge lagoons.
And you're going to remove any of the material that's in there?
We will take down the trees and the scrub, but our intent is just basically to fill it in. There's, there's no excavation involved.
Okay. Questions, Jimmy?
No, no.
Jeff?
No.
Ally?
No.
Caroline?
I just have one. So this fill came from, you said, your construction site? Is there any concern about anything that might be in the fill at all?
No, it is, so we have done environmental testing. It is lightly polluted, so it is not, it would not meet the definition of clean fill. But let's be honest, there's been a wastewater treatment plant
Sure.
at this location for, I think approximately 70 years. So, you know, you look at prior wastewater treatment, basically it was sludge lagoons.
As in Roman. Okay. All right, Aaron?
My environmental planners report went out in your packet Friday night. It's dated June 10th. It reviews, it highlights of some of the things Mr. Amway just went over. Talks about the regulated activities, erosion control, and I recommend, here's what I recommend, which is on, oh, I want, before we get to the recommendations, attached to it, oh, photos. Mr. Chairman, you said, what does it look like today? So I went out there with, with Neil Amway. We went out there, oh gosh, a month ago or so and took, I took photos of how it has filled in. Lot of invasives, lot of vines, but some tall trees, cottonwoods and such. And then it, there's picture of the last fill that was approved at the back. This is the, the last permit they came, water sewer, sewer division came in and got for that fill. At, I guess you call that Lagoon Number Five, is that right? Okay.
Correct.
And then, so they're gonna, and they're storing the fill there now and they want to put it, push it to the, I guess it's the west toward the Quinnipiac and Lagoon Number Six. Okay.
So that, that's an issue? You don't have any issue with it then?
No, I, I guess my conditions of approval. Did you get a copy of this, by the way? Okay. Number one was the control matting, erosion control matting to be used must be certified biodegradable. That helps with critters getting all tangled up in it. And number two, erosion control measures are in place and meet the approval of the environmental planner prior to moving forward with the rest of it.
You don't have any problem with that. Okay, I'll entertain a motion, the significance of this activity.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to deem application A22-5.2-155 John Street, Town of Wallingford Sewer Division, not a significant activity.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Call for a vote. Caroline?
Yes.
Ally?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Jimmy?
Yes.
Yes. Now I'll entertain a motion to approve or deny this application.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve application A22-5.2-155 John Street, Town of Wallingford Sewer Division, with the following conditions of approval, that erosion control matting be used certified biodegradable and that erosion control measures are in place and meet the approval of the environmental planner prior to any work being conducted on site.
Motion made, second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Call for a vote, Jimmy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Ally?
Yes.
Caroline?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, application 22-5.3-1107 Northrop Road, Mark Development. By Municipal Industrial Development. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Chairman, members of the commission, for your record, my name is Dennis Sennaviva. I'm attorney with Sennaviva Law Firm in Meriden. With me tonight, to my left is Matt Davison, the author of the Wetland Impact Assessment Report, our soil scientist from Davison Environmental. And also to far left, Jim Cassidy, the project engineer with Halcy, Pearson and Cassidy. The applications, you can tell from, from what we've submitted, is a proposal to build 130,016 square foot warehouse and distribution building with associated parking and underground detention system. The building will be built in both, should this be approved, will be built in both Meriden and Wallingford. So it's 106,337 square feet of the building would be in Meriden, 23,679 square feet in Wallingford. Jim will go through that.
Which way is the water going to run?
It's going to run to Meriden. Good question, Mr. Chairman.
That's more important than where you're going to build the building.
850 Murdoch Avenue in Meriden is the location. It's also known as 1180 Northrop Road. That's the wetlands application there for the Meriden side. This piece is obviously known as 1107 Northrop here in Wallingford. It's an undeveloped 6.36 acre parcel. You may remember too, Mr. Chairman, that we were here for a related project of Mr. Orsini across the street for a 250,000 square foot warehouse distribution building. That was approved February 3rd of 2021. Reason I note that, and Jim will make that as part of his presentation, but there was a later modification, it was administrative approval in August, of August 5th of 2021, allowing some additional work to be done on the road. You may remember that road had a crest to it and so the road is part of the approval on, on the, across the street and also as part of the application here. You know, there's work, work to be done on the road, it hasn't been done yet. That was part of Aaron's comments in her environmental planner's report. But that had been approved by the chair back in, in August and it went before your commission in October and they again accepted your approval. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn that over to Jim Cassidy.
Good evening, for the record, my name is Jim Cassidy, professional engineer principal with the firm of Halcy, Pearson and Cassidy, here representing 1070 North Farms LLC for the development of a piece of property located at 1170 Northrop Road. As Attorney Sennaviva mentioned, we are here seeking permission to have regulated activity associated with the development of a new building that's going to be 130,016 square foot warehouse distribution building on this property. Just like to go over a few maps, just give you a lay of the property. One more page here. So the property itself consists of 55.1251 acres, is outlined in yellow on this plan. This is Northrop Road on the left or on the south side of the property. This is 91 to the bottom or to the east and then Murdoch Avenue in Meriden is up on the upper portion or to the west. The property is, is separated by the town line. There's a purple line on the plan here. That's the town line to the south. We have about 6.36 acres, which was in, within the Town of Wallingford. The remaining 48.76 acres is in the Town of Meriden. The access to the site actually comes off of Northrop Road. You see this long gray area, that is an access drive that comes off. It comes through the Flexo property and then eventually into the site. Then you'll see this new, this tan rectangle on the far, we'll say, the northwest corner of the site. That is a new 163,000 square foot building that was recently approved and constructed within the Town of Meriden. The area that we're talking about today is located down at the south portion of the property along the east side of that access drive. There's a teal color area, this is an area of wetlands along the east, easterly side of the property. You'll see another teal color area off to the west. That's a wetlands area that's totally in the Town of Meriden. As was mentioned, what we're proposing to do is construct a new building with a footprint of 130,016 square feet. It's represented by this brown rectangle on this plan. A portion of the building will be within the Town of Wallingford. The area in Wallingford will consist of about, sorry, 23,679 square feet. You also see these darker gray areas. To the front of the building, off the main access drive, we'll be constructing a parking lot along with another parking area off to the north end of the building with another access driveway. That access driveway will feed around to the back of the building. We will have a series of loading docks. Total number of parking spaces on the site will be 97. For utilities, what we're proposing to do is there is actually a sewer main that runs up from 91 up into this cul-de-sac and all the way up into the Flexo property. So sanitary sewer service for the building will be connected in to that main. For water, there is an existing 16-inch main that ends, basically this is the Northrop Road Industrial Park West and ends just in front of that. We're looking at doing an extension of that 16-inch main all the way across the frontage. That extension was part of the approval for the development across the street. The 250,000 square feet of building that was approved across the street on this plan, you can see some ghost lines of that approval. Sorry. As Dennis had mentioned, I'm going to flip a couple more pages here. Again, this, some ghost lines across the street for the development that's happening. As Dennis had mentioned, as part of that project, we came back to you in August. We received administrative approval to rebuild this section of Northrop Road. That was in two parts for the extension of the water main. But as you also go out there today, there's a crest in the road. We wanted to lower that crest to improve sightlines and improves traffic circulation. We've superimposed those modifications onto this application, but that was already approved as part of a prior application. Drainage on this site, if you were to take a look at the drainage patterns today, you find the majority of the site slopes away from the access drive and then down towards the wetlands along the westerly side of the property, along, I'm sorry, along the easterly side of the property. There's actually two wetlands areas. The one at the northern end drains, and this is again in Meriden, drains to a 42-inch culvert that discharges underneath 91. The one that's, the portion that's in Wallingford, once again picks runoff from the site, draining in the easterly direction and then continues through a water course and then eventually through a 42-inch pipe that goes underneath 91. This wetlands also picks up the site drainage from the Flexo property. There's a series of catch basins and then there's a series of catch basins within the existing driveway. It runs through a 36-inch pipe, which actually runs right through the center of this proposed building. As part of the development of this new building, we will be rerouting that pipe around the new building, but then once again connecting into the existing line. So the water will continue to go through the existing system as it goes today and eventually change, discharging to that wetlands, which again is all within the Town of Meriden. For drainage for the development itself, what we're proposing is to have two underground detention and infiltration systems. We have a smaller one to the front portion of the building. This system is designed to pick primarily up the roof leaders for the front half of the building. And then there's a larger one to the rear in the loading area, which once again picks up the rear half of the building and the rear loading area. These systems are both designed to have the bottom foot deal with the first inch of runoff and allow it to infiltrate back into the ground. But at the end of the day, when you take a look at the entire model for the system, you'd find at the discharge point underneath the highway that you have a, basically a zero increase in runoff is actually a slight decrease in runoff post-development. For the drainage areas itself, we're finding we do not have a significant change. In the drainage report we prepared, there was an existing drainage area map provided. We looked at three different areas. Again, I'm not going to get into A and B because they all go into Meriden. This one outlined in, highlighted in yellow, Area C, is, a portion of it is in Wallingford. But again, if we take a look at the limits of the drainage area, it's basically on Northrop Road. It drains away from Northrop Road in the northerly direction to the Town of Wallingford and eventually going underneath the highway. Based upon the original drainage areas for this, this subarea, we had about 15.7 acres post-development. There's similar area highlighted in yellow. We're picking up similar area. It is picking up a portion of the building, but once again going through the infiltration system so before it goes underneath the highway, you see that we have no increase in runoff post-development. So if I do a blow up of the overall development, again, what I tried to represent on this plan is the activities within the upland review area from the wetlands. The black line on this plan represents the town line, so once again to the south is Wallingford, to the, to the north is Meriden. In the Town of Wallingford, you have a 50-foot upland review area. It's represented by the red line on this plan. What we're looking to do is to construct a portion of our access driveway and a retaining wall along the back portion of this site within that 50-foot upland review area. So the area crosshatched in green is the area of activity within the upland review area. For this area in green, you're looking at an activity of about 5,290 square feet. The closest point to the wetlands for the retaining wall will be about 22 feet away. We looked at alternatives. The alternative wall itself is about 284 feet long. It's about six feet high. The alternative was to do a natural slope, but that would brought the activity a lot closer to the wetlands. Shortly I'll have Matt Davison get up and speak to the wetlands and the quality, but also what we're going to be able to do to mitigate for activities within the upland review area. I believe you're going to speak about landscaping below the wall. The other item that we had to deal with is in your regulations, there's a requirement that we have over 20,000 square feet of impervious coverage that we need to get a wetlands permit. As mentioned, the building itself, the portion that's in Wallingford is 23,679 square feet. The bituminous area to the rear and the access driveway to the rear is 23,000 square feet. The concrete walks are about 480 square feet. And then there is this little tan area, which is a patio, so we can consider it impervious area also. So you'd find in total impervious area within the Town of Wallingford is about 46,204 square feet. Being the property is about 3.6 acres, it works out to slightly over 10% of the property would be have impervious coverage. So we tried to keep the impervious coverage at a minimum on this property. As part of the environmental planner's report, she requested that I give a breakdown of these numbers. I prepared a letter, I believe Dennis handed it to you, Aaron?
Yeah.
So I, I broke down all those numbers as part, as a response to the environmental planner's report. So with that, I'm going to conclude my portion of the presentation. I'm going to have Matt Davison get up and he can talk a little bit more about what he found with the wetlands.
Thanks, Jim. For the record, Matthew Davison, Davison Environmental, a professional soil scientist, professional wetland scientist, a Connecticut certified forester and a certified professional erosion and sediment control. I had delineated this site on several acc- I had delineated this site on several occasions, starting in Meriden and then eventually got to the Wallingford portion of the wetland delineation in January of two thousand twenty-two, denoted by the X-series wetland flags over here. And the wetland, as Jim said, has been historically disturbed. It's a wet meadow, it's prior agricultural land. The evidence of historic disturbance is fairly obvious, there's some old, what are probably building pads from farm-related structures up along the wetland boundary. There's clearly disturbance in the fact that there's a stormwater downfall in the middle of the wetland, and there's what I would consider to be grading irregularities throughout this, this area. Unnatural topography that aren't, it's not recent, but just unnatural topography that leads me to believe this wetland's historically, been historically disturbed. The predominant vegetative species in the wetland is reed canary grass, which is an invasive wetland species. And this wetland boundary, if you go out in the field, is fairly nondescript because there's not a clear topographic break. The wetland is seasonally saturated in the upper boundary, so it doesn't look extremely wet. I think the most obvious way to, to identify if you're in the field, the difference between the wetland and the upland is that in the wetland, you have reed canary grass and it transitions pretty quickly into mugwort in the upland side. Mugwort's an upland invasive species. That line is fairly clearly defines that wetland boundary throughout this, this whole wetland. I did a wetland functions and values analysis using the Army Corps methodology, recognizes thirteen wetland functions and values, which I know you guys are very familiar with. Wetland functions and values are determined by the physical characteristics of a wetland, which is what we consider the effectiveness of a wetland to provide a certain function. If a wetland is a depressional wetland, it probably, it may provide water quality functions or flood flow attenuation functions, whereas a sloping wetland would not provide those functions. We also look at the landscape position of a wetland, where is it located? Does it have the opportunity to provide a certain function? A depressional wetland in the middle of a state forest will probably not have the opportunity to provide water quality functions because there's no sources of pollutants. In this particular case, I've identified the principal functions being what I call the water quality functions, the nutrient attenuation functions, the pollutant attenuation functions. Reason being, this wetland is densely vegetated with emergent vegetation, which is effective at treating stormwater runoff or runoff, and it also has the opportunity to provide those functions because it is located in a developed landscape with inputs from roadway and from development. I do not believe that this development would adversely affect those wetland functions. In my letter, I have made comments and recommendations related to the development, and my understanding in speaking with Jim, that these have all been addressed and adopted. In my comments, I identified the potential for short-term wetland impacts, which are related to construction-related impacts from erosion and sedimentation. Essentially, Jim has developed a plan which has incorporated erosion control features consistent with the two thousand two guidelines. I do not anticipate any construction-related adverse impacts to wetlands. With respect to long-term wetland impacts, long-term wetland impacts can result from a loss of wetland functions, wetland filling, and in some cases, stormwater inputs, stormwater's not properly treated. In this particular case, the proposal is to do underground infiltration. In my letter, I note the, the effectiveness of underground infiltration systems. The University of New Hampshire Stormwater Center is probably the best resource for understanding how certain stormwater structures function. They have studied at length these underground infiltration systems. And if you read those, the study that they put out, one of the big things that sort of elevates underground infiltration systems from providing decent stormwater treatment to stormwater treatment that's similar to other primary treatment systems like detention basins and stormwater wetlands infiltration practices, is the incorporation of what's called an isolator row. It's essentially a pretreatment row in the underground infiltration system. It's simple, it's essentially just a fabric line pipe that provides some pretreatment. I recommended that that be added to it and Jim agreed. The other, my other recommendations were that the underground infiltration system have, has easily accessible maintenance ports. It's very important that these systems are maintained properly and some type of maintenance schedule that dictates, you know, when these will be cleaned out. And again, that, that, those details have been added to the, to the, to the plan. As a result of that, I do not anticipate any long-term impacts to the wetland with that stormwater treatment system. I do not anticipate any adverse impacts to wetland hydrology. I did look at the pre and post drainage area with Jim. The pre and post drainage areas for this wetland system are very similar. I actually think post-construction, the drainage area increases slightly. So I do not, and, and also if you look at the pre and post drainage areas, the effective, the affected area is a very small portion of the overall contributing drainage area to this wetland. So I do not think that this being here will adversely affect wetland hydrology. In terms of mitigation, I thought, I, I spent some time thinking about what could be functional wetland mitigation on a site like this for our buffer impacts. And what I came up with was, oh, the next, sorry.
Before you leave this site, the Wallingford section of this application, you gotta focus on that.
Yes.
Where's the stormwater drainage coming off of the street? That driveway here, whatever you wanna call it.
North or broken?
No, the driveway coming into your property. No, not that one.
New one.
All goes down. There's a high point here, but it goes up here.
Microphone.
There's a high point here. Everything goes to the drainage system on site, which goes into Meriden.
All right, so what is the drainage system on site?
There's a series of catch basins that collect the runoff.
Yep.
Catch basins discharged to the underground detention infiltration system.
Which is on the Meriden side?
It's totally in Meriden.
But that's, that's what you're talking about now? There's no retention basin, it's all underground?
All underground, yep.
Roof drainage? Where's the roof drainage?
Roof, the roof drainage also goes into the underground system.
The same system?
Correct. There's two different inlets.
Same existing?
Yeah, one side, the parking lot goes in, so that's where the isolator row would be. The opposite side is where the roof leaders go in, was the clean side.
So that's really what we're, we're focusing on here. The wetlands associated with that.
Correct.
So you're gonna have zero impact to the wetlands in Wallingford?
Correct.
Because your whole system is in, in Meriden.
We're re-alysing the existing drainage system that's in Meriden.
Okay.
Not even changing the outlet.
Jimmy, you got any questions?
No questions, however, I, just seizing the opportunity here with the upland review area, two things of note. I just find it interesting, Meriden has a hundred-foot setback for their regulated activity. It doesn't mean you can't do something there, however, it does give you some leverage, which I think is very important. And the other thing that I wanna tie to that is, in this particular upland review area, one of the things that I like to look at under these circumstances is, will it make a difference if that area is used? Now, if you were in a wooded area with a Wilberham kind of environment, you take away the wooded area directly in association with that wetland and you'll desiccate it, you'll prevent the, you'll, too much evaporation, too much temperature change. This doesn't make any difference. There are no trees, there's no big shade that's going to affect this buffer area. In light of that, I see this as no issue in terms of the wetland impact. And I just wanted to use that as an example. Why would you want that buffer? Sometimes it makes a big difference. In this case, I don't see a difference, that's all.
Jeff, any questions?
No questions.
Ally?
No.
Caroline?
No, thank you.
You got anything going on, Erin, with us?
Well, the environmental planners' report went out in your packet last Friday night, dated June tenth, and it goes over what they've described, I don't have to go through it. At that time, I was looking for two things, a wetland report, which they hand, they did come in on June ninth, there were wetland impact assessment, which Matt, so you got that in your packet on June tenth, Davison Environmental, okay? And he was addressing some of my concerns, although I wanna come back to that. And then the other thing I wanted was responses to my May nineteenth comment letter from the project engineer, and he gave me that tonight, I think, or this morning, something like that. It's been a blur, and so that's good. And I have, I didn't suggest conditions of approval, but I can, I've made notes, we can talk about that. But before, Matt, I'm a little confused by your report, first off. I know what, what percent of this is in Meriden? Eighty, seventy, I don't know, roughly, ballpark?
About twenty percent of the property's in, in Wallingford.
Okay, but what percent of like development stuff?
Same, similar, about twenty.
Okay, so I, I get that, but it seems like this report is really talking to Meriden. I mean, so much of what you say in here is Meriden, which maybe you didn't, it was too hard to split out the two towns and talk about the two different towns. Wait, before you answer that, and, and that, that confused me. Maybe you're just in too much of a hurry and, you know, really, most of it is in Meriden, I get it, okay. But the other thing that confused me is your recommendations in here, I don't, they're great, but it's like they haven't happened yet. Has Jim Cassidy incorporated your recommendations yet? Could you say, like a hydro, dynamic separator should be?
Yeah, so like a lot of the recommendations deal with the drainage system that's in Meriden. So we've been working with Meriden, and yes, he recommends an isolator row and the cleanout ports, so those have been incorporated in the plan. He also recommends that we do some buffer planting at the base of the retaining wall, which has been incorporated into the plans, going back and forth with Meriden.
My, my point is, it's dated Ju, well, it came in June ninth, well, it's dated June eighth. So by that time, wasn't it already incorporated in your plan?
It was part of our application we had before Meriden, that's when it got incorporated. So you technically were supposed to have the meeting on June first, we had the meeting the same night down in Meriden, so.
Right, so by that time, it was already in the plan.
That part was, that part was not.
You're saying it should be incorporated, it already was?
No, that part was not in the plan at that point.
Oh, I get it, okay, so this all happened in the last ten days or whatever?
Correct.
Okay, okay, got it, got it.
So we're all set then?
Yes, so the conditions of approval I'm looking for here, the standard erosion control one.
Okay.
You know that by heart, I hope. Placards, wetland placards.
Okay.
In our part of the world, and do you wanna bond? I'm, I'm, I'm just throwing it out there, I'm not saying a bond, but I'm throwing it out there.
Well, I think there's gonna be such a large bond over in the Meriden side that I don't think there, we're causing enough negative impact on it. You know, you're, you're gonna be looking at, people are gonna be looking at this project, and they're not gonna be forgotten about, so I don't think a bond's needed on this one.
Okay, and I, I do wanna point out, when I wrote my report, and, and I had no idea I, that the road improvement, widening and the flattening of the road had already been, I knew we approved it for the Orsini project across the road, but I thought this was now more, more alteration to the road, so no. So I stand corrected and it's just one, it was, it was already approved, the road work was already approved.
So you, you just have those two or three items then?
Yes.
Okay, I'll, I'll.
What was the, wait, what was the third item?
If you wanna bond, but.
Erosion control measures?
No, no bond.
No bond?
So it's just placards and the standard E and S be in place environmental planner, go look at it before you.
So those are just those two things?
Yeah.
Okay.
Entertain a motion regarding significant activity?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that application eight twenty-two, five point three, one eleven, or sorry, eleven oh seven Northrup Road, mark development, be deemed not a significant activity.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call for a vote. Caroline?
Yes.
Ally?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Yes, now, I'll entertain a motion to approve or deny.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve A twenty-two, application A twenty-two dash three point five, sorry, A twenty-two dash five point three, eleven oh seven Northrup Road, mark development with the following conditions, that erosion control measures are in place and meet the approval of the environmental planner prior to work being performed on site, and that envi, inland wetland placards be installed in appropriate locations.
Okay, motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Second, is, any discussion? All for a vote, Jimmy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Ally?
Yes.
Caroline?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, going on to application A twenty-two, five point four, four laser lane.
Holy Jesus. Okay. Go ahead. I understand.
Sorry.
Yes, sir. Good evening, commission members, I'm Chaz Evans with Bowler, we're the civil engineering land development consultant. Our office is at sixty-five LaSalle Road in West Hartford. I'm here before you this evening to present four, four laser lane. It's a current building that's under renovation. Our client bought it late last year and has actually received building permits from the town to renovate the inside of the building. With that came supplemental site improvements. They are adding a loading dock, a drive-up garage door, and then modifying some of the existing parking areas that over the last twenty to thirty years have eroded to a heavy-duty concrete pavement section. The loading dock, drive-up door, and retaining wall associated with it are within the upland review area, which is fifty foot within the existing stormwater management basin. In addition, we've worked with Erin on, the existing basin was not maintained, what appeared to be over the last twenty years or so, and as mother nature would have it, took it back with several trees in all the sand filter basins as well as the overall stormwater basin. So Erin, myself, and the contractor met on site in mid-April to see that the repairs were completed, the stormwater basin, and determine a long-term stormwater operations and maintenance plan for this project. As proposed, again, this, this project for laser lane is between, behind research parkway on the laser lane cul-de-sac. Again, the area we're talking about is in the southeast corner, and it's also associated stormwater basin that abuts a existing swamp. in addition to some of the areas and existing loading docks, as I had mentioned, being repaired to a heavy-duty concrete instead of the existing eroding asphalt pavement section. We received letters, the initial letter we received from Erin was actually December fifteenth of last year. As it would have it, the applicant looked forward and made some cost-cutting measures, revised the plan, so we withdrew the original application to resubmit. We responded to Erin's letter on May third of this year and received comments back from the town engineer on May twenty-third, Erin's office on June second, and then the water division and Eric Krueger on June tenth. All comments within that letter are, will comply, as far as we can confirm, we can, we will satisfy all comments listed by all three parties. There was a comment that we worked with the town engineer, looked at records, the existing stormwater management basin, there's a existing weir at the bottom of the weir, and it's in one of Erin's comments, the bottom of the weir is at the bottom of the basin, which isn't typical in stormwater basins, but in looking back at recorded plans, that's how the original design plans were designed in nineteen ninety-five, and the ASBILT survey was actually recorded in nineteen ninety-nine to show the weir was at the bottom of the basin. So the stormwater system, from our understanding, functions as it was originally designed. In fact, the original design plans on record with the town in ninety-nine showed additional impervious parking areas in a similar location where we're proposing loading docks, and those parking areas were never built. So again, one of the comments we received from town engineering was to make sure we satisfy stormwater management regulations, which is common with every application, and talking with the town planner, if you were to approve our plan, we would go through an administrative approval with them, and they would review it for stormwater compliance. administrative approval with them, and they would review it for stormwater compliance. This time I open up for any questions?
Aaron, you got comments regarding this application?
Yes. I've worked with Chaz, you know, getting this, trying to get this wrapped up, trying to get it together, a lot of back and forth.
We've learned a lot of history on this site.
Yeah, and then, there is a handout from the Water Division that came in Monday for you, for you, there's a lot, have you got this, Chaz?
The June tenth from Eric Kruger?
Yes.
Yeah, so we actually proposed with this loading dock, there are two existing sand filter basins, just to make the design simple and kind of isolate what we're doing, we proposed a new oil grit separator and sand filter basin, of which Eric had been out on site and said, if possible, if you can find it in the field, the original sand filter basin has capacity, you know, it's a new business to Wallingford, they just bought the building, if you can find a way to save money, you may be able to reutilize the existing sand filter. So Eric is actually okay with us utilizing that, out of an abundance of caution, to make sure we have more regulated impact as opposed to less and then needing it after the fact, we've designed a sand filter and oil grit to handle the entire loading dock, which is about nine hundred square feet or point oh-two acres of impervious.
So who are you responsible to on the sand filter in that area? Wetlands or Water Department?
It would actually, I think, be both, because the sand filter is, has to be designed and built per the Water Division specifications, but it is within the upland review area of the water course, which by definition is the existing stormwater basin.
What's the comments, Aaron?
Okay, the big, on the face of it, one might think it's simple, loading dock with a flared end going out, and then it was a lot of back and forth, Water Division kept on changing its minor one-on-one, blah, blah. And of course, the biggest thing for me is it hadn't been maintained, the basin and the sand filters and the outlets hadn't been maintained, I don't know, thirty years, whatever, I mean, trees, et cetera, so I asked for maintenance, and I guess, I don't know, in April, they finally went in and, you know, cleaned out the basin and the trees, so I could see what was going on, and so on. And that's when I saw the weir at ground level, and I think I have photographs in my previous environmental planner's report to show that. But anyway, something Chaz is saying is confusing to me, because when we were looking at the information up in the engineering department, and the reason I went up there to look is there's two drainage easements that come off Research Parkway into this property way on the east, and I said to Chaz, you've got to tell me who holds these drainage easements. He goes, well, I don't know who holds them. I go, yeah, but you've got to find out, and what is the water doing? Well, it turns out, he couldn't, he didn't find out, but the engineering department told me it's held by the town of Wallingford, and the water, what these two drainage easements do is they convey water from a swamp in the east of Research Parkway, they just let it flow under Research Parkway and come out on this side. In other words, it's not for the road, you'd think it would be for the road, no, it's just, apparently, the Research Parkway bisected a giant swamp. Anyway, so this swamp, half their property is swamp, and I'm talking classic buttonbush swamp, buttonbushes up to here, and then mature oaks and so on growing out of it. So the water from the swamp flows into the detention basin, which I'm, you know, it's just bizarre, I've never seen this before. So, I mean, as I was standing there, it was flowing in slowly, not too great, but you could see it going in, I'm like, why is this happening? So I go upstairs later, and the engineering department, I look at the original nineteen-eighty, ninety, whatever.
Ninety-five, maybe, ninety-four.
And it, the detail for the weir shows it up two feet, two feet above ground. So I'm confused, apparently you saw a different detail for the weir that shows it down at the ground.
Same detail, it's actually, the detail for the weir is the concrete structure, and the detail on the design plans show that the weir elevation's actually at the bottom of the basin, so the weir itself, that two-foot extra we're seeing, is what's buried underground to make sure the weir doesn't fly over in the storm. It's no different than a curb six inches above the pavement, but buried twelve or eighteen feet below to really secure it in.
Okay, okay, now I get it, you tried to tell me on the phone today, I think, but I didn't get it, but now I get what you're saying, okay, but why would the outlet be at the ground level? I don't get it.
Aaron, we've got to focus on this, I want to go home tonight, please. You can talk with them why the weir is designed there, it was approved at the time, it had to be investigated, so where do we stand with the loading dock and the wetlands?
The loading dock's fine, I have no problem with that, but wait a second, let me see if we are out of time on this, maybe we're not. Can we table this till July?
I recommend, I think it's, all the comments you guys have, engineering has, and Eric Kruger have, we can satisfy, they're will complies, no issues on our end. So I'd recommend a conditional approval that we've satisfied all three comment, all three comment letters, as well as, I think, ones I've heard tonight.
That isn't what she asked you, you want to table this till next month?
If we, if we could vote a conditional approval? I'd prefer not to.
Prefer not to, okay, well, you can see Eric Kruger's got his laundry list of things he wanted for that sand filter and stuff, I don't think.
He actually recommended we remove the one we're proposing, but again, all his letters are will comply, we have no, no engineering concern.
Okay, it's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, Chaz, you are, are you going for a site plan revision to planning and zoning, or is it going to be done administratively?
It's administratively.
Okay, so they don't really get to go into the whole nine yards with it there. So, so when did you apply? That's what I'm fudging around here, trying to figure when you.
I want to say we reapplied sometime in early May.
Right, so you received at the May meeting?
Mm-hmm.
So, okay, so June, so you receive, this is your first presentation? So yes, we have no problem going to July in terms of statutory, this is his presentation, so we wouldn't have to ask for an extension.
What are you going to ask for them to?
Okay. Well, let's, I have, unless you can tell, I know you've been talking to our town engineer, maybe you can inform me what happened today, but as far as I know, there is no detention in this basin, so the question, correct me if I'm wrong.
It provides detention, it allows water out at any storm because it's at the bottom, it's no different than drilling a hole in the bottom of a bucket, it's not, instead of just the water free-flowing off the parking lot and the roof and draining to the swamp, it holds back the flow off, it slows it down to that, just that one point for the weir is.
Yes, for a little storm, yes, yes.
Correct.
Because it's a depression, so of course it's going to hold something back, yes, yes. So no one, I don't understand, no one has shown that this detains, that meets the peak flow or detains anything. Now, Chaz's position, I think, is, it doesn't have to, Aaron, we're just adding a loading dock, we can't reinvent the whole wheel here, but these folks who own this property bought it in December, I think?
Six or eight months ago, yes.
Yeah, so they sort of bought a pig in a poke, I believe.
Wait a minute, this was an approved plan.
It was approved in ninety-nine.
Just finish, it was, it's an approved plan, accepted and built. Now you want them to change the plan, is there some reason they should change the design?
The, I don't know, it's unfortunate, maybe if we had another week for me to talk to the town engineer, I know, I've never seen swamp water flow into a detention basin.
Are we going to look to have them redesign the, the plan that was approved? That's, because that's what you're asking for.
I think, here's, if we had time, that he, that Chaz would provide calculations to show that it's what exactly it's doing at all.
Have you pulled the plan out of the file? We must have the plan downstairs with all the calculations and everything associated with it. Where's the file downstairs?
I wouldn't have, but somebody has it.
Well, somebody's got it downstairs with all the calculations in it.
Right, somebody.
You want them to redesign the calculation?
But okay, let me, let me see if I understand this, when I went out there to look at it and took pictures, the basin was dry, so you have a dry basin because it hasn't rained in a while, okay, and the flood, the swamp water is coming into it, I'm like, what's going on here? I still don't, I still don't get it, I just don't understand it.
Could, would you be looking at the conveyance of the water that goes between the two separated swamps? There's a road that went right through the swamp from the discussion we've had here tonight, and this water's conveying back and forth in this weir on one side, I'd ask the question, what if the weir wasn't there?
It would fly straight from the building through to the swamp.
Right, with no restrictions.
Correct, so the weir is providing the restrictions.
It just controls then the rate of flow, rate of conveyance.
Correct.
Rather than build up. I'm not even sure if it was totally necessary, but it's functioning, obviously, for that purpose to control the flow in, across the system. I don't know if it'd make any difference one way or the other, if it's functioning and working well, why bother doing anything? I don't know.
We still need to show our improvement of the loading dock meets the town's stormwater peak rates per the town engineer's comments for the planning and zoning administrative approval. So I need to provide that, and a lot of it's just going through and providing a calc. Again, I see that as a condition of approval to address her comment she stated in her May letter, because it's a comment just showing the sand filter basin holds back, the loading dock's holding, then goes to the detention basin in series.
I'll entertain a motion regarding the significance of this activity.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that application A 22-5.4, 4 Laser Lane, Brett Demmers, is not a significant activity.
Is there a second? Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Call for a vote. Ally?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Jimmy?
Yes.
Yes. And now entertain a motion to approve or deny this application?
And there's no conditions?
I don't know, is there any conditions?
I'll have to state for the record, I'm not ready to approve it, but if you want to go ahead, you know, whatever.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve application A 22-5.4, 4 Laser Lane, Brett Demmers.
Motion's made, is there a second?
One second.
Any discussion? Call for a vote. Ally?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Jimmy?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thanks.
Have a great evening.
Okay. Received the application of Barnes Road for Police Department, number two, fifty-three, Dibble Edge Road. George was here tonight looking for administration approval on this application, so it's just as well that he is here, and to give a brief description, my understanding is this lot we approved many years ago, and then, we approved the subdivision many years ago, and then we approved this lot with a crossing of wetlands to get to the lot. Well, now the person's going to build on a lot, and they want to bring in utilities up the driveway in the area, so you're looking for administration approval. That's correct. Is there, there, Aaron has some concerns if she wants to voice them, that's fine, I just think that we already approved the driveway crossing, so you're working in the, just in that right-of-way, or that area. How's the commission feel? Jimmy?
I agree with you, if it's been approved.
Been approved? Jeff?
I think you should go ahead.
Ally?
No comment.
I mean, if we, if they were crossing somewhere area outside of the actual right-of-way of the driveway, it might be a different story, but I've got to correct, that you're just digging up the driveway crossing, or digging into the driveway crossing?
Yes, the driveway crossing of the.
Not going to go through the water, you're not going to.
No, the driveway crossing for the, for the wetlands was constructed in 2009, reviewed by Aaron, and that activity is, basically, the twenty-five feet was taken up for the, for that crossing, the outside slopes were riprap, it's stable, and we're going to work within the fill that was put in there, there's no activity in the wetland itself.
All right, then we'll grant you administration approval.
Thank you very much, Mr. Schiff.
All right. I think that's it to come before us tonight. You got anything else, Aaron?
Uh, let's see.
Violations, we've pretty much the standard group of violations?
Yeah, Summerwood, I have good news to report on number three, thirty-three Summerwood Drive, we're done.
Wait a minute, I'm having trouble.
Oh, sorry, thirty, good news, number three under violations.
Okay.
Thirty-three Summerwood Drive, it's been satisfied, it's good, I went out there, took pictures, it's all good, he's done, he did a tremendous amount of work there to fix the nightmare that was there, okay.
Very good.
Yes, number four, you know, if you want to reaffirm that notice, violation, it's still out there, you know.
We're going to reconfirm that this still is a violation, twelve Mansion Road.
Yeah, it takes a vote, if you'd vote on that, just.
Number one, the same thing, we reconfirm that that is a violation, would very little be done.
Why don't you vote on all, one, two, and four?
Number five is an interesting one, it's the old Walco Park down at Silversmith Park is where the old ball field was, but the Southern Connecticut Pallets been grinding up worthless pallets, and the pile was huge, massive. Where they were disposing of them, they weren't taking the, the round-up pallets anymore, so the pile got enormous, and they were concerned that if the river came up, the pile would go down the river. Fortunately, the river didn't come up, and I think they found a home to be hauling the bark mulch to, and it's not bark mulch, the wood mulch too, so it's working its way down.
They, yes, they got a cease and desist order from the zoning department, that spurred them on, and the fire department spurred them on, then the DEP came down and spurred them on, and you got a report on all that in the packet, it went out in the packet with photographs of what's going on there, but they're working on it, the good news, they're working on it, they're taking it out truckload by truckload, I don't know how long it's going to take, but.
It'll take a while.
They're working on it.
I always know. Okay, nothing else come before us tonight? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Andrews is, Army Corps is supposed to be dealing with Andrews, they haven't set the world on fire, right?
They put a lis pendus on their land this January.
How much?
Well, no money, I looked at it, there was no money attached.
Well, the town's got probably five hundred thousand against them based on the judge's order.
Something like, well, I'm not sure what it's up to now, it was two hundred dollars a day for each, so.
For three, well, and he brought his kids out.
It's been like five years.
Anyway.
I was wondering about that, it's been a long time since.
Been a long time, everything has changed.
Do we need to motion and vote on these violations quick before we adjourn?
No, I don't, I don't think so.
Okay.
I think they're just, in fact, we need a motion to adjourn.
Oh, sorry, we're all sleepy.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
You have to vote on, to reaffirm those three notice of violations, I'm sorry.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to continue the notice of violation, can I do all three of them at once?
Yep.
On twelve forty-five Old Colony Road and Quinnipiac Road, Jersey Patel, in addition to notice of violation at nine fifty South Colony Road, one NRSJ LLC, and twelve Mansion Road, Laura Cirillo.
Motion made, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion to adjourn?
I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
We haven't had this late in a long time.